Professor Cessna will lead us in the pledge. And, oh, Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes.
Don't want to forget that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you have given us. Please watch over us and provide us wisdom to lead our community forward in a positive direction. And please watch over those that are serving in our military, not only here in the United States but overseas. And please also watch over and protect our first responders as they go about their duties throughout the day and week and year. And this week, pray. Amen.
Do we have any corrections on the May 5th City Commission minutes?
No. Okay.
Okay, they'll stand approved as submitted. At this time, we have public comment for anyone in the audience that would like to address the City Commission on anything that's not already on the agenda. We'll give you five minutes, and we'd like for you to state your name. Okay? Now we'll move forward.
Mayor and Commissioners, just before we get started, I think we've got several items today and several items with folks in the audience who will either speak to the issues or are interested in the issues. And I think in meeting with the mayor beforehand, we'll progress through the agenda, but when we get to Item 7B, which is the pool, that's going to be a long presentation. We would have normally done that as a commission meeting workshop, but we wanted the opportunity for that to be televised and seen on TV. And so that's a long presentation and has the potential of kind of holding up the rest of the meeting for a while. So we're going to do that a little bit closer to the end. So the recommendation would be to go through the agenda as written, skipping over 1B, getting as far down the agenda as we can get, even past 10A, which is a scheduled 1:30 public hearing, and then at 1:30 coming back to the public hearing. Following the public hearing, we would then, or that agenda item, that 10A agenda item, we would then start the pool presentation, which would be probably at 1:35 or 1:40 maybe. If that's okay with you all. All right, well, let's get going then. Item 6A, a representative from the Public Utilities Advisory Board will be present to discuss a recommendation regarding use of plastic bags in Garden City. So, Michael, let you start. Okay, Steve.
All right.
I have some business from the Public Utilities Advisory Board.
You want to state your name?
Oh, Steve Michael. Sorry. And I am vice chair on the Public Utilities Advisory Board. We have discussed this issue when the board was created about three years ago. This is one of the things that we wanted to work on. And we had made several discussions on this, and we finally came to a motion to advise the Garden City governing body that the Public Utilities Advisory Board, by unanimous vote, 7-0, encourages the governing body to take the necessary steps in eliminating the use of plastic bags and looks into ways to increase recycling efforts within the As we know this at the present time, we are basically wanting to eliminate the use of the T-shirt type bags, which are the widest-used type of plastic bag. This has come upon us over several years, in that these bags are found everywhere in the city, along the fences, if tumbleweed catches them. And it's just a real problem. The other issue with this is those type of plastic bags, and plastic bags in general do not recycle well. You can recycle them, but if we recycle those through our facility, it takes a huge amount of plastic bags to make a bail. We would have to purchase another baler to bail that. We cannot even market those bags unless we have a full semi-truckload of bales, which may take years. So to clean up the city and reduce our use of plastic bags, we have come to this conclusion that we would like to present this to you. In addition to that, we would like for you to consider giving us permission to put together a possible ordinance. This ordinance, as we have looked at other ordinances across the United States, basically addresses T-shirt bags. They're not going to address the plastic bags for your dry cleaning, the bigger bags, big shopping bags. These do not usually end up out in the landscape. So there's a lot of, it can be a very complex ordinance, but we would like the opportunity to put something together for you if that would be something you would like.
Have you talked to merchants?
We have. We have made a survey, sent out several, I'm not sure how many there was, eight or nine businesses? Four participated, is it four or five? And they were not overwhelmingly opposed to it. Most of them were agreeable, some of them were very neutral. There were no negatives. We have talked to different businesses. One situation, which I had at Wes Dillens, which was kind of unique in that we went in and they had run out of plastic bags, which is fine, and they had backup paper bags. And ironically, the cashier was the manager. And I said, "Wow, this is really nice, you're using paper bags." And she says, "Well, we ran out of plastics." And I said, "Well, what would you think about not using plastic bags and going to paper?" And she said, "I'm from California, and I can't imagine you people still use plastic bags here." Well, I'm a forester grad with forestry wood products, and I know of the pulp and paper industry and all of that. Paper is highly recyclable. Wood is renewable. And all of these things are really good for the environment. So if you would be agreeable, and you could get back with Mike if you would like, if you would like for us to work on an ordinance, we can do that. There is no other city in the state of Kansas that has banned plastic bags.
That was going to be my question.
And, you know, as progressive as Garden City is, I think this is probably a good place to start. So, any questions?
Mayor, I thank you for coming today. I had the opportunity to attend the advisory board meeting and was really excited to hear the enthusiasm of the board members and the vigorous discussion, and there has been, you know, community reach and a lot of discussion about this, and I think it's been carefully considered. I would love to see us lead on this issue here in Garden City in the state of Kansas. Certainly, there are many municipalities, larger and smaller than ours, across the nation who have done this, and so there's model ordinances and things that we can do and do it in a smart way. But I absolutely support this and hope that we go forward with the ordinance.
So are you hoping for like a phase-in? Or are you saying so at a certain date that no more plastic bags are? So how does that normally work in other communities that Commissioner Burns has indicated? Have you checked those?
We want to set a date to pass the ordinance, okay? We don't want this five years out. We don't want it 10 years out. We'd like to have it as soon as possible, okay? That is our goal. Dillens has set out Kroger, has set out 2025. They're not going to have plastic bags anymore. I think everybody is moving towards this. They're going to phase this in because they're a very large corporation and they have to do it. As far as what we're doing here, we would like to set a date to finalize this. But we need to go through the creating an ordinance and so on and so forth, and that's going to take a little time, but I think we can move forward with it fairly quickly.
They've got to get rid of their inventory or move it to a different city, I guess.
Well, yeah, if we ban it here, I mean, there's Menards, there's Home Depot, there's Dillens, there's Walmart. All of these, you know, they can use them up pretty fast.
And I think you're talking about just the T-shirt. I mean, I think that's, because I think some of the larger bags, I mean, I don't really see a workaround, but I appreciate your limiting.
And the ordinances that we have looked at mainly address that. And I think that's the biggest, largest, 90% of the whole problem. And it would be, the ordinance would state exceptions for other, you know, like the dry cleaning bags, and there's just all kinds of plastic out there. I'd like to see straws and, you know, all of these issues. But we're going to attack the biggest one first, knowing more from their thing.
Well, at least the straws aren't getting into the ocean in Garden City. We're safe on that. Well, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and we'll take it under advisement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim March 2018 as Intellectual and Development Disabilities Awareness Month in the city of Garden City, Kansas. And I believe we've got folks here. Vicki, are you going to speak?
Yeah.
All right.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much. The reason why we really celebrate and want to bring the attention of National Intellectual and Development Disabilities Awareness Month to people's attention is that being an active part of the community has many benefits, including better health. During March, Natural Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, Mosaic helps our community recognize the benefits people with disabilities bring to the community and gain from the community. A study by Cigna, the insurance company, found that loneliness is more dangerous to a person's health than obesity. The same is true for people with disabilities. Data released through a partnership of Mosaic and the Council on Quality and Leadership shows that when people with disabilities have support of friends and others in the community, they are 60% less likely to be hospitalized. If they have meaningful work and activity choices, they are 63% less likely to be hospitalized. Mosaic works to help people build those relationships through social activities, church, and work. During NIDDA month especially, we invite people to learn about the lives of people we support and what they contribute to our community. Mosaic hosts free Discover the Possibility events, and this Thursday is our next one at our offices at 2708 North 11th. And I would encourage members of the community to attend this one-hour event to find out more about those with disabilities. And even people that are familiar with Mosaic will tell you that they've learned something new by attending one of these events. Also, we would like to invite everyone to our open house that we're going to have here at the end of the month, next Thursday, the 28th, for our new sensory room. And today we have Shane and Muriel to help us receive the proclamation. And again, we thank you so much for your support and helping us spread the word to for inclusion, because it really does work.
Thank you, Kevin.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented for the Development Disabilities Awareness Month in Garden City.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the proclamation. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mayor, do you want to come down and take a picture with these folks? Vicki, I know you're both lunches. Like you're heading out or?
Yes.
Lucky to attend one, Muriel, thanks on two, or when are those available?
We have one. We have, yes. Anyone for a ten? We have one coming up this Thursday, the 21st, and then, of course, everyone is welcome to our open house that we have coming up on the 28th. That will be on the January 28 page.
All right, let's, I'll read this proclamation. Whereas the month of March 2019 is designated as National Intellectual and Development Disabilities Awareness Month, NIDDA, in order to celebrate and recognize people with disabilities, and whereas the disability is a natural part of human experience and in no way diminishes the right of people with disabilities to make choices, contribute to society, experience a full and many blessings of an American society, and whereas family members, friends, and community at large all play a role in supporting people with disabilities, and as they pursue their dreams, and whereas the goals of this city properly include people with disabilities realize full access to housing, employment, and recreation activities which help create productive and satisfying lives and to live as independently as possible. And where, and now, therefore, I Dan Bankhauser, Mayor of the City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2019 as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in the City of Garden City, and call on the citizens of Garden City to observe the month with appropriate programs and activities, and therefore, I encourage the citizens of Garden City to seek information from their organizations with expertise in matters concerning developmental disabilities. Sign and seal the 19th day of March 2019, Dan Bankhauser, Mayor.
Want to make your picture taken? Can you move your picture, please? You're not? No? Oh, sorry. Okay. Oh, sorry. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You appreciate it.
Yeah.
Item 6C, the governing body is asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim March 19, 2019, as Ethan Fisher Day in Garden City.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve the proclamation as presented to proclaim March 19, 2019, as Ethan Fisher Day in Garden City.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that we approve the proclamation for Ethan Fisher Day. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Second?
I second.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mayor, if you'd like to join Ethan in the front of the room, I think that'd be great. Probably have some other folks that... Mayor, you want to read it, or you want me to read it for you? Are you a little parched after the last one? Okay.
There were some tongue twisters there. That was fun.
I'll take the easy one. Whereas Ethan Fisher has been involved in Boy Scouts since 2011, has earned the Cub Scouts highest award, the Arrow of Light, and whereas Ethan continued to advance through Boy Scouts, earning each rank and completing the requirements for Eagle Scout. And whereas Ethan earned 40 total merit badges, even though only 21 are required for an Eagle Scout award. And whereas Ethan completed an Eagle Scout service project that consisted of a significant service to the community by building a mobile flag retirement station for the American Legion Post 9. And whereas one in 10 boys who joined scouting achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, and Eagle Scouts are regularly found among military, business, church, and community leadership. And most Eagle Scouts continue to advance the cause of scouting into the communities where they live. Now, therefore, I Dan Bankhauser, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do proclaim March 19, 2019, as Ethan Fisher Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge Ethan's accomplishments and express their sincere appreciation for his service to our community. Sign and seal this 19th day of March 2019.
One, two, three.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thirty families, I think, which was... You want to get a picture too? We can take...
Please, you want one?
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm just going to stand over there.
Item 7A, Mayor and Commissioners, congratulations to City Clerk Ceylan Hurtado on the occasion of her being named the Mildred Vance City Clerk Finance Officer of the Year.
Oh, my goodness.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
There was an amended agenda today, and this was the item that we added. We didn't want to put it on last week when we were putting the agenda together because she's involved in putting that together. And I think they, I think it was a word, Friday at noon, a surprise, or Thursday? Friday?
Thursday at noon.
Yeah, Thursday at noon.
Manhattan. Yes, in Manhattan.
So that was, there was an annual conference in Manhattan, Kansas, and so there was some staff and family members that were able to attend as well and add to the surprise. So congratulations, Ceylan. We're going to skip over Item B and come back to it. Items C through J are staff reports. We're able to answer any questions on those that you might have. Hearing none, call your attention to the meetings of note. Three commissioners, myself, Rochelle Powell, Jared Smith, and representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, Finney County, and FCEDC are headed to represent the community at the Western Kansas Congressional Reception. Some will be leaving Saturday, some will be leaving Sunday, and then returning at Tuesday or whenever. I guess, I don't know, everybody's travel schedule is there. The Monday's kind of the heavy lifting day of that event, so we'll be glad to report back on that at the first meeting in April. I think we're ready for the appropriation ordinance. Item 9A, if approved, it would be ordinance number 2479-2019A.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve appropriation ordinance number 2479-2019A.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve appropriations ordinance 2479-2019A. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10B, we'll skip over the 1:30 public hearing. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of sales tax special obligation revenue bonds for the Sports of the World Star Bond Project. City's Bond Council, Mary Carson, is here to present the ordinance as shown. If approved, this would be...
2826.
Okay. If approved, this would be ordinance number 2826-2019. Mary?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll kind of go through a little bit of the background on this for you, based on what you received in your agenda packets. As you know, the city created the Star Bond District in 2014. In 2017, you approved the actual project plan that we'll be looking at financing, at least the first phase of, in this bond issue. The Kansas Department of Commerce approved the issuance of Star Bonds for this particular project in the amount not to exceed $24,500,000 plus approved costs of issuance and other financing costs. And on November 20th of 2018, you adopted a resolution approving a development agreement with GC Investments to addressing, you know, the development of the project. After that was done, you authorized Matt to select a placement agent for the bonds. We were looking to do private placement of the bonds rather than public sale. City selected Cruz and Associates. We've been working with a gentleman named Michael Lambert there. They're from Little Rock, Arkansas. He's been doing a very good job for us. And he's located two sophisticated financial institutions, FIB, First Internet Bank, Public Finance Corporation, and Sterling National Bank in New York, both of whom are interested in taking exactly half of the Star Bond issue as a direct placement, direct bank placement, rather than a public sale. So that's that you, and I believe your last meeting, your first meeting in March, you authorized the mayor to execute those commitment letters that we received from the two institutions. So we've been proceeding with structuring the issue, and the Star Bonds are limited to financing that eligible project cost amount in the amount of $25,400,000 plus the cost of issuing the bonds, including there's a bond reserve fund, and there will also be a capitalized interest account to cover the first interest payment that's due on the bonds. And all of that will be approved by you in adopting this ordinance, and also has to be approved ultimately by the Secretary of Commerce, those additional costs on top of the $25,400. So the bond ordinance authorizes the amount of the bonds, to issue the bonds in an amount not exceeding $30 million. It looks like we're going to be at about $29,540,000 for the bond issue. And it authorizes all of the documents that are necessary to issue the bonds, including the primary document. Well, there's two primary documents here for this structure, a bond trust indenture, and this is between the city and Commerce Bank. And they will receive the bond proceeds, manage all the accounts, make payments out of the project account. They'll hold the bond reserve fund, they'll hold the capitalized interest account. And then the second document, most important document in terms of the revenue stream that backs the bonds, is that sales tax distribution agreement. This is between the city, the trustee as trustee for the bonds, the trustee bank as an escrow agent, and the State Treasurer of Kansas. And that, what happens under that agreement is that the Kansas Department of Revenue will start collecting the increment that was established in 2014, and we'll talk about in a little more detail later. They'll start collecting those incremental taxes. They'll be deposited into two separate funds held by the State Treasurer of Kansas, the City Bond Finance Fund and a State Bond Finance Fund. The state will make distributions of those monies periodically to the trustee escrow agent, Commerce Bank. Commerce Bank will then apply those amounts to the debt service payments on the bonds and to other expenses that are payable under that trust indenture, you know, fees and that sort of thing. But primarily, that's, and it's dealt with differently. The city revenues are dealt with slightly differently than the state revenues, but it all goes to payment, you know, payment of the principal and interest on the bonds primarily. Now, we have that, the Star Bonds are maturing in 20 years. They have to mature within 20 years under the statute. They're subject to, and it will be two, just two-term bonds that are maturing in 2039, but they're subject to a schedule of mandatory redemptions every year. And those are, that's basically how it will amortize, and we'll look at that in a little bit. They're also subject to redemption, what we call special mandatory redemption from surplus funds that, so if there is sufficient money collected, incremental tax revenue collected to pay the current debt service on the bonds, set aside a reserve for the next debt service payment on the bonds, any amount greater than that goes into a fund that can be applied to special mandatory redemption of the bonds. So you can potentially be paying things down earlier than that 20-year term. The Star Bonds are special obligation bonds, and I've kind of been talking about that. They're payable only from the amounts that are pledged under the bond indenture, and that is the incremental revenue, both the city's unobligated share, the city's unobligated portion of the county's taxes levied in the district, and then the state's retailer sales tax delivered in the district. And this is just the increment from the baseline established in 2014. They are subject to, there's no general obligation debt, there couldn't be no claim made against the city's taxing ability, for example. If those revenues are insufficient, then they're insufficient, and we deal with that Projections are very good, by the way. The final issuance of the bonds, once you approve this ordinance, we will be putting the final transcript together to the Attorney General's office. They have to sign off on that. There was, we're also subject to receiving a final approval from the Secretary of Commerce, and they will be looking at the bond structure, approving these financing costs, and that, we've scheduled a meeting to meet with them in Wichita on Friday. So ideally, that'll work out.
Mayor, it's 1:30.
Okay.
Can we do the...
Yep, we'll break this item. Yep, we'll break this item and come back to it. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Item 10A, a scheduled 130 public hearing and consideration to adopt the ordinance to establish the Campus in Kansas redevelopment district. Process would be to open the public hearing, invite members of the public who want to speak to this item, the opportunity to speak to it. Once everybody has had an opportunity to speak, the commission may close the public hearing and then begin this discussion amongst themselves regarding an ordinance which, if approved, would be ordinance 2827-2019.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in reference to this?
How do you miss, Mayor?
Okay. Come on up, Hank, state your name.
Hank, Hank Rifekogol. Mr. Mayor, is this concerning the TIF project?
Yes.
Could you define that for me, what that means, and in plain, simple, layman terms, so I can understand it? What I've read in the paper, I hope that's the truth in the paper. Could you explain that to me, please?
Well, TIF is basically tax increment financing. It's horizontal, it's everything under the ground, and I guess could be above, but basically it's no vertical construction, just basically infrastructure.
Infrastructure, and why...
Water, sewer.
Okay.
Electric, that type of thing. So that's basically what this is.
And what does that underground, I mean, that infrastructure, what does that entail? Is that the cost of?
Cost to the developer, I guess.
Okay, and who pays for that?
Mayor, if you don't mind, if you don't mind, I'll, the tax, the tax increment financing allows for a debt mechanism to be issued over a period of up to 20 years. So what pays for it is those bond proceeds. And so let's say there's $5 million worth of cost to development X.
Okay.
And the, the $5 million on day one is what pays for road, sewer, water, electric, gas, those types of infrastructure that the mayor mentioned. The revenue stream to pay off the bonds is the tax increment. So at the start of developing the tool, the property, the property upon which the project sits was historically paying, let's say, $1,000 in property tax for undeveloped ground. After the improvement is made, if it was scheduled to pay $30,000 a year in, whatever thousand dollars a year in property tax, the difference between the thousand that they used to pay and the new amount based on the new value of the property becomes the revenue stream to pay off that debt. Once that debt's retired, that then goes back to the four taxing entities, the City of Garden City, the Garden City Community College, Fannie County, and USD 457 in our case. But the, the property taxes that were below that baseline continue to go to those four entities. So it's the growth on what you didn't have before the project happened that is used to pay back the, pay for on day one, the city, or the gas company, or whoever's, the developer for the cost of, of any interior roads for large developments, signalization, those types of things, all that gets paid for by the increment created by the new value the development generated.
I think I got that. My concern is what I understand here, reading in the paper, that, and please, this is my first time, my first rodeo with you guys.
Hey, you're doing great.
And, and, and let me kind of tell you why I'm here, okay? My, my first, my first charge. I'm getting ticked at these high property taxes we're paying. And I've exceeded my property tax in the last 15, 16 years, I've exceeded the cost of my building, if I had to put it up again. And the reason why I'm here is, if I understand right, according to this article in the paper, Thursday, January 17, 2019, the TIF program, which we are talking about that, we're talking about a portion of the business property taxes are diverted and used to help finance and develop in which the business is located, be it at that time that was written in reference to the, the First National Bank going up on campus in Kansas. My concern is, are they using the property taxes to pay off, if I understand right, the infrastructure, their debt? Is that right?
Yes.
Could I do the same thing?
If you had to rebuild your building, you could, you could, in theory, now, you may do the math and say, well, it doesn't appear to be worth it, but you would have the option of applying to the commission to say, I want to create on this property a redevelopment district. It would have to qualify as a redevelopment district, as would this project, which is actually the step that's, I think, being considered right now. And let's say the value of your existing building, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have a raw land baseline, but you'd have an existing building baseline, and you'd say, well, presumably, presumably the county appraiser's going to like my new building better than they liked my old building. And so that increment that was created, you'd still have to pay the same amount that you have been paying, but if suddenly, because of the new valuation, according to the county appraiser, said that you had to pay $5,000 more in property tax, that $5,000 increment would be available to pay for, maybe not the vertical costs, but any related infrastructure costs that were associated with whatever you built there.
Let me ask this question. If, if I'm, if I'm not going in the right direction, y'all correct me, because I want to make sure that I know what I'm talking about, and I kind of did my homework on this. If I understand right, the developer, First National Bank, a for-profit business, can use their property taxes to pay off the debt? Is that right?
Yes.
In lieu of, in lieu of property tax.
Well, no.
It's what would be collected. It is, it's what would be collected.
They will pay all of their property tax, and a portion can be developed, can be diverted to pay off the debt for eligible costs, not all the costs, but eligible costs related to their project. You're right.
And why is that?
Well, Mr. Rifekogol, I've, I've had the same questions, and the argument that has been made to me, and to, I think, as to the commission, and when they look at these economic development tools that are used in many municipalities, and I think I asked the council for this project at the, the last meeting, and when it was in that paper, the argument that is made is, well, without this incentive for us to be able to pay for this infrastructure, we can't develop this property. And the, the bet that the municipality is making is, well, 20 years from now, we're going to have that increment now back to us, or the other taxing entities, to be able to put into our, our, our use for, you know, our general operations and those kind of things. But the, the argument is, well, without this, and this increase in value, so we're making a bet that this is going to increase the value of that property, yes. They're saying, we can't, we won't do the development. If I'm not misquoting you, tell me, but I think that was my question, is, is you won't, you, you won't develop this property without this incentive, or can't make it financially work. And so that's, that's been the argument for the use of these tools, as I understand it.
Let me ask the other question. I know this is not the only business in town for profit, and I guess what I'm trying to say, I have issues with a governing body of getting involved in private business, for-profit businesses, and we are paying, I have not been afforded to not pay my property taxes to develop my, never asked the government for anything. I knew the cost when I put up my building, the infrastructure, the cost of putting up the building, developing the profit, and by the way, okay, forget that, I have never asked the government for anything, and I can't understand why other businesses that are currently using this, paying, using their property taxes to pay down their debt. And if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong. Is that right?
I think a lot of it is the size of the project. You know, our business didn't use it either, but we kind of grew in steps, and so we really didn't have a big project, and that's the difference, Hank, basically, is if somebody's going to go out and spend $30 million, $20 million, whatever.
Yes.
You know what? It's to our advantage to help get that done. It helps our city, it helps develop and grow your city. So that, that's the difference. You know, I, I mean, like, a project save of $100,000, it wouldn't be worth it because of all the fees and everything. It's not worth it. It's, you don't want to do it.
I, I think I got that. Is that, not saying that, but it, what it's saying is, according to the amount you're going to spend to put up a new structure, according to somebody like me who puts up 130...
Right.
It's not feasible. So in essence, what I'm saying is, because not everybody's paying their fair share in property taxes, is that why our property taxes have gone up? And I understand each one of them have different entities, USD 457. But I feel that across the board, and I know there's other businesses who are taking this TIF incentive, so what happens is that balance, the scale balance of property taxes, this is us, and this is them, so they're not paying in equally across the board in property taxes. And thus, what happens is, that's why the high property taxes. And I think if everybody paid in their fair share of property taxes, would that reduce mine, and I have six or seven other property owners in, in the McNaulton Platt Division there, that are just livid with the property taxes, and I might add, I have one individual, his property taxes went up 42%, and that's high. And then when we see this, where we see somebody using property taxes to pay down their debt, when they ought to be putting property taxes in to run the, the different entities, including the City of Garden City, and again, if everybody paid their fair share, I would feel a lot better.
Yeah, so I think fair share is very subjective, and I, I mean, we are only one taxing entity, and the city commission has worked really hard to keep the, the mill levy that we've issued very level. So I don't think that's, but there are three other, there are three other taxing organization and entities. So as far as, but them not paying property tax, no, they're going to be paying property tax.
I understand that.
But that will be, that will be given back to them to, that will be paid back to them so that they can develop the infrastructure, and so...
Yeah, and I think they have a 20, 20-year...
Right.
Over, yeah.
Up to. That's a pretty good deal.
Yeah.
That's a pretty good deal. Could we, let me ask the question, and the question is, I have a list here of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, nine entities here in Garden City. Property taxes ought to be about 20, 2,100,000, about 200,000, and they get their abatement for almost a million. My question is, to them, what they're not paying in taxes, could that be afforded to us to lower our property taxes? If they paid the full 21, 2,100...
Well, you're now comparing apples to oranges on that.
Is that right?
Yeah. See, you're...
Okay.
That's totally different than what we're discussing here.
So a tax increment, I mean, you can, I mean, it's, I think Commissioner Undery's right, it's, it's subjective to an extent, and there's no obligation to like or not like a incentive tool, like a tax increment financing district, or in some cases, an abatement that might correspond with some industrial, those are two different things.
Yes, I understand that.
And, and the commission doesn't, isn't under an obligation to convince you to like it today. They, they can hear your objection to it.
Okay, that's another, I understand that's, and what I'm starting to see happening is, and tell me if I'm wrong, I'm starting to see a lot of businesses getting on the bandwagon of not having to pay taxes. And that's, I know, you know, and, and then when you see yours going up, you wonder who is not paying and who is. And I know I'm paying mine.
So just to be clear, a tax, everyone paying, every, everyone in a tax increment financing district is paying 100%, 100% of their property taxes. There are no abatement, zero abatement, 0% abatement. There's, a tax increment financing tool would not work if you were abating the property tax that's used to pay the debt. And so that, that is a completely different tool. There are tools that abate taxes, and there are partial abatements that have been granted by the city commission and the county commission for a, for a few projects, generally industrial in nature. But this project specifically that the public hearing is about uses a tax increment financing tool, and there is zero abatement. They will pay 100% of their property tax. A portion of that will be used to pay for the infrastructure costs related to develop an undeveloped, a previously undeveloped property that has proven difficult to develop because of the costs related to that very same infrastructure. And the commission can hear your objection to it and others' objection to it, and take that into account when they decide whether or not they should use that tool for this purpose.
Okay. Again, and I won't bear, take much more of your time, but let me say this. I have issues with, and I think some of the other property owners here have issues with property taxes being used for the next 20 years to pay down their debt on a for-profit business that's in to make a profit, and I know the bank is in to make for a profit, and I have, when I put up my building, let me go back to what I said, I have never asked that the city pay my expenses. It's just not in the mindset. I never understood the, the City of Garden City going into a private venture, sourcing, you're not really loaning money, but you're allowing somebody to not pay their fair share of property taxes. And that's, and what I'm saying is, who allowed this to happen so they don't have to pay property taxes?
They do have to pay property taxes.
I understand that.
Mr. Rifekogol is correct, and a portion of it does get diverted back. I mean, in principle, he is correct.
For a, for a specific period of time, for 20 years, but then after that...
That's a pretty good deal.
It is a good deal.
Right.
You're right.
But then, but then after that 20-year period, it goes away, and then they have to pay that higher portion on the property.
I understand that, yeah.
What, again, it's developing that property that otherwise would not have been developed, and we're helping, through this, through this incentive, it's helping that, that company to develop that portion of that property that cannot be developed, and helping them to help move our city in a positive direction. Is there, is there anything else that you have? I mean, you're going to debate the, you're going to filibuster this on us.
What I'm saying is, every one of us takes a risk.
I understand that.
You buy a piece of property, you hope that that property increases. I'm not coming to the city and asking, can I have, can I get where I have to not pay property taxes and use that to pay my debt? Could I do that? I have already put up my building, and could I get some relief?
But they, they are paying property tax.
Let's see what Caleb has to say.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, just to answer the question, I think he asked, question was, is who allows the city to do, it's the state statute allows the cities to use tax increment financing. It's a tool that's established by a state statute that allows you to use this economic development tool to, to do that, and it's up to, it's a multiple step. This step that we're talking about today for this project is in regards to creating the district or designation of the blank test that you have in there, and it's a determination the governing body has to decide, but they're not the only ones. It's not a unilateral decision made by the governing body. All taxing jurisdictions after this have a certain period of time that if they choose or feel that this isn't a good thing, they're, they can back out of it, and then it's, it's a, if the TIF district is dead at that point. And there's another step to this, that there's another hearing, which also allows for the taxing jurisdictions to also voice their opinion about the plan that's going to be submitted, because they don't have the detail of the plan, they're looking at establishing a district first and meeting the criteria of that. And, and so, within 30 days, or the time period, a lot of... And, and so within thirty days, or the time period a lot of my state statute taxing jurisdictions, any one of them could say, we, we don't want it. And then, and then the next step that happens with this TIF, there will be another hearing, and all the taxing jurisdictions will get to see the plan in detail, and also have another opportunity to hear it as well. So there's multiple opportunities for the governing body. This isn't a final determination of, by the governing body, other than to create.
To set up the district.
Mr. Eifcogol, thank you. Excuse me. Mr. Eifcogol, do, I do thank you for coming. I think these are good questions to raise. And in principle, I think that you are correct. I think it, what the mayor says about scale is correct as well, but when we talk about all of these increment financing tools, whether we talk about the star bonds and these other things, it is, it's essentially public money going back to a private interest for private development for a while, and someone does stand to make money off of that. And we're making the bet that down the line, and then you have to question what the valuation in twenty years is also, but then down the line, it's going to benefit the whole community, and I think people will argue that in some ways, it does. But I think, your, your point is incredibly well taken.
Yeah, and that you're, you doing the research, I, that really was excellent, so thank you.
We just have one more thing to add.
State your name, please.
I'm Gail Lout.
Yeah.
I own Western Air Gas, you know. I own the land and stuff there. Our biggest beef is that if you've got the wherewithal to, in financing, to do this, why are our property taxes going up so much? That's our biggest question. I own land in four different counties in Kansas, and some in Missouri. And my taxes here in Fiddy County went up thirty-one percent in, since two thousand fourteen. My taxes in all the other counties, the highest ones went up fourteen percent. One of my other counties, well, my taxes in Missouri actually went down one percent. So what's happening here?
But here.
What's happening, Dan?
I think that the city, we haven't raised our mill levy, very little in the last four years.
Why are the valuations going up then? What's happening?
You need to talk to the county about that. We don't have any jurisdiction over the valuation. I mean, you can go and you can appeal it, but, but that's not really why we're here today, but I think, to, to put it real simply, anybody in this room, you bring us a twenty million dollar project, and we'll give you the same thing. I mean, that's, that's the difference.
We'll look, we'll look at it.
We'll look at it.
We'll look at it.
But I, I, I mean, that's the difference.
I had a ten million dollar project.
Okay.
And I didn't get anything for it.
Okay.
Okay. And I'll bet you, you could go out and in a handful of people, you could find your thirty million and haven't asked for a thing.
Right.
You're, you're destroying the little guys to make a big guy richer.
Okay.
That's the bottom line.
Well, thank you, thank you for your input, and hopefully this clears up.
One more thing, and, and I'll quit, I'll quit. Yeah, my, yeah, my problem. But property taxes, to pay down for-profit business, their debt, I don't go for that. Using, you're using your property taxes for a profit, a, a business for profit, to pay down their taxes. That's why I think my property taxes are up. According, if, and there are other TIF, again, there are other TIF businesses that are using, utilizing this.
Financing.
So, and, and my hope is, when do you think we'll get some relief?
Thank you. Anna?
Commissioners, Law &amp; Development, Fiddy County Economic Development Corporation, I would just like to make the comment that the TIF district itself does not actually allow them to build their buildings, or do any of their, their embellishments to their buildings, or anything of that kind. Those funds are used specifically for infrastructure because those are costs that are usually absorbed by the municipality. When you are a growing community and you are growing into new areas, you have to extend infrastructure to those areas. In doing so, you have to build roads, curbs, guttering, wastewater, all of the things that most of us take for advantage if we're building in an area that's already developed. So somebody, if I build, if I go over here on Main Street and decide to build a new, a new business, I've already got access to streets, to sidewalks, to curbs, to gutters, to wastewater, to water, to electric, to gas. Everything is available for me. Somebody paid for that. Somebody paid for that. A TIF district is nothing more than an opportunity, a lot of the costs that are eligible are actually costs payable to the City of Garden City. Therefore, the extension of water services, wastewater services, streets, curbs, gutters, sidewalks. Those are costs that we're partnering with the private sector in order to make those projects happen. If you want to act philosophical, we can, but the communities who are doing the best job of supporting private industry by partnering with them to meet the goals of both entities are those communities that continue to grow. You have two choices as a community, you grow or you die. There is no, there is no stagnation. You only have two options. And you either rise to meet those challenges, and you welcome business, and you help them to take advantage of the tools that have been created by your legislature, or by your federal Congress, or you don't. Those really are your options. So I just want to make sure people understand, these are, these are costs that are associated with growth regardless of where you are. This happens to be a tool that allows the municipality the opportunity to partner with the private industry instead of fronting all of those costs to build the roads and all of the infrastructure needed before they can expect the business to build there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this, about this issue?
Do you want us to speak now or after you close?
During the hearing.
During the hearing?
No.
Yeah, come on up.
I'm Kristin Chikowski with the developer. I had a short presentation, Matt, I don't know if you have that to read. I'm gonna have to ad lib a little bit to cover some of the topics that were just raised, but I think having a picture of the project site will help.
Which one, right here?
Yes.
Is it the blight study?
Do you have a quick?
We only got two.
My name is Kristin Chikowski.
I don't think we have this.
Okay.
Go ahead.
My name's Kristin Chikowski with, on behalf of the developer, and just wanted to refresh your memory a little bit about the project, and also maybe use this picture and this one just to give maybe a better idea. So I think what was being discussed just now, I think, is a pretty accurate representation of why we're here today, asking for the district to be established. If you look at this particular piece of land, it's completely undeveloped right now. There's absolutely nothing in the way of infrastructure there, and a lot of it's inland property, which means there's gonna be incredibly high infrastructure costs to develop this whole property. If we wanted to do one thing out on campus or one thing out on Kansas, it'd be a lot cheaper of a project, but I think having this large piece of property and wanting to do something big for the City of Garden City is what brings us here today to discuss the district, so just want to point that out. And then also, I don't know if Matt touched on this or was going to touch on this, but one thing to note about the TIF district in Garden City is the city and presumably the county as well will also be getting the benefit immediately of the sales tax that is generated from this project, so there is somewhat of a deferral on the property taxes, but there's an immediate realization of sales tax increment, so. I don't know if anyone had any more specific questions on sort of the project basics.
I actually had questions about the, the buildings that are existing there, the houses.
Sure.
Are there people living there? Are those occupied?
No.
No.
They're all vacant?
There's just one. Oh, you mean up on the hill? Yeah, those are vacant.
Yeah, they're all vacant.
And in disrepair.
So. And then I think, and I guess, I'm not sure if I touched on this last time, but one piece of property has been added, maybe since the last time you saw a map of the district, which is in that top left corner, which is currently under contract purchase, which is why it's included here today. And what we're here for today is the establishment of the district plan. There is still a project plan approval that would have to take place if the district goes forward, and there's no objection from the county or the school district. And, and then just another thing to note, I guess, here is the project is proposed to be pay-as-you-go versus bonded by the city, so there'd be no bonds issued in connection with this. The developer would pay all the costs upfront, and then would apply for reimbursement when funds were available, so. In particular, today, what we're looking for here is an approval of the district, which we're requesting that under the TIF statute, that this be found to be a blighted area, and I listed out the factors from the statute here, and I believe what the TIF, or what the blight report found is that, I think, seven of the nine factors were met for blight. Those factors tend to include deteriorated and abandoned structures, defective and inadequate street layout, unsanitary, unsafe conditions, deterioration of site improvements, so not just buildings necessarily, but if there's other improvements that they're deteriorating. Tax or special assessment delinquency, seeing the fair market value of real property, defective or unusual conditions of title, improper subdivision and obsolete plating, which there's currently basically no subdivision right now. There's three separate properties for tax parcels, but it's not subdivided as you would consider most commercial development. Endangers of existence of conditions which endanger life or property and conditions which create economic obsolescence. Based on our study of the area, we concluded seven of the nine factors existed. A few of the pictures from the area are shown here. That picture at the bottom right sort of shows the existing tax parcel, so it's not in any way what you would consider a typical commercial plating structure. There's no internal roads, other than, I think there's about, there's one gravel driveway or two driveways, but that's about it for roads. And just generally, the property has not been in good shape for a while, so. What we're here for today is the finding of blight and the establishment of the district, and next steps, again, would include project plan, project plan approval, among other approvals. So with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions from the commission? Anybody in the audience, question? Come on up. Come on up. So we hear you.
Well, I understand that this TIF program just pays for stuff underground, right?
Horizontal.
Underground.
Yeah.
She mentioned streets and entrances to the deal and everything. That would not be included, right?
Yes.
Yes, it would.
Why? Because they're on top of the ground?
It's infrastructure.
It's, well, but it's still, it's still part, what I'm saying.
Tech, county, but it's, but.
It's defined in the state statute as streets as an eligible cost.
So there'd be nothing, like no buildings, no signs, nothing that goes above the ground?
Anything else?
You have something, Caleb?
All right, just when you close the public hearing, I just think to go over the ordinance with you.
Okay.
All right, if there's no other comments, I'll close the hearing.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, there, um, so you have before you the, the ordinance for your consideration. There is a couple minor changes that are in that, after talking with counsel in regards to that, that aren't any major changes as far as just some grammatical errors and corrections according to state statutes wording that we have to add to the, the ordinance. Otherwise, it's ready for your consideration. Any questions you have in regards to this request in the blighting?
Do we have the revision?
The revised ordinance, no.
Yeah.
Can you read it?
I don't have that with me at this time, because we, this all came at the last
So we.
So we don't really have the ordinance to vote on?
Yeah.
Well, we've got.
The ordinance, the changes as, as it occurs, and the ordinance will go back to, and do you have that with you, your copy, by chance?
I don't think I have the printed version, but I can just explain. There was just, there were just a few references to statutes that had been repealed, which is only applicable, applicable with respect to enterprise zones, since if the property were in an enterprise zone, you could still use that finding to create a TIF district, even though the enterprise zone statute has been repealed. Nothing under the TIF statute has been repealed, so we basically just are removing the references to a statute having been repealed, because it hasn't been.
So it's more referencing the, the statute itself in the ordinance, is what you're saying?
Right, it just changes that clause.
So you're adding like a KSA twelve dash one, seven, seven, dash, zero, two, somewhere in that ordinance, or have you removed it?
The state statute that we need to plug in there. So it's really minor as far as.
Yeah.
Mayor, can we move this item until we have a printed version of the ordinance to review, maybe just to the end of the meeting?
Yeah, I could, I can have that.
And I have a question too. So as far as blighted, so how many, so there was nine, nine of those, how many did they, and I know they met seven. Is there a, is there a threshold to, to say something is, is blighted?
Statutes have the majority.
Okay, so, so seven out of the nine, okay.
So, so that's your, your, your responsibility to, to look at that and see that those, those meet those criteria. As staff has looked at them, and their blight study that they provided, it appears to meet the criteria outlined in state statutes, and so, so you would have that.
We could.
Mayor, it sounds like you've asked delay consideration of the item until later in the meeting. I'd ask staff to bring back both a clean copy and a strike-through copy of the ordinance.
Can you do that? Okay.
Appreciate it.
We'll come back, I guess, to that.
So I think it returns to ten B.
Mary, you're up again.
This is, again, the governing body's consideration.
Well, we got through all the background, a few, just call your attention to a few other things that were included with your, your information. There is a budget for the project that shows the project in total, including all of the previous development. And then also the star bond eligible costs, and there's greater detail on the second page of that. Michael Lambert with Cruisin' Associates prepared the other numbers, and there are just a few things here I want to call your attention to. He gives, given you a historical star bond district sales. So this would show, had you, for example, done a bond issue in twenty fourteen, you know, at the, at the same year that you created the district. Basically, it shows you the collections from twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, so the historical sales in the district. So it's been, you know, obviously increasing. The sex, the district sales tax shows you how, what the, the incremental revenues will be. So this is the incremental collection. It's the state tax at six point five oh percent, the county tax point two four percent. This is the city's share of the countywide retailer sales tax, and then this, the unobligated portion of the city's tax at point five percent, so it's a seven point two percent increment or amount that could be pledged. And what we'll do is take those numbers, so the state say, base year, or the base year in twenty fourteen, that was the amount of tax that was collected due to the retailer's, of sales tax from the state. The city and county, county and city base year was three hundred and ten, so the increment's going to be everything that's collected over those amounts. And those, we determined those figures with the Kansas Department of Revenue, and they will sign a certificate as part of that tax distribution agreement specifying that that is the baseline. So that's what we've worked all these numbers off of.
Ms. Carson, can I, will you indulge me for a moment? Because you kind of giggled before, in your pre- presentation, when you said, well, if there's insufficient funds, we'll deal with that. Can you indulge us and just explain how, how that's happened in other municipalities, or what we could expect will be the worst-case scenario? Obviously, the projections that have been provided are good, but let's talk worst-case scenario.
Well, I'm not aware of any star bond issue in Kansas that has gone into default, but there's, the issue is structured to, to prevent that, and you're in a better position than virtually any star bond issue I know about just because you've got this historic, you, you're already collecting revenue. You've got a revenue stream. But the way the bond issue is structured, if for some reason the revenue stream disappeared, I mean, there are debt service reserve funds that would pay out, but then ultimately, it would just be an issue of, the only thing that's pledged to it is these revenues. If these revenues are not being collected, then.
So then it goes back to these lenders, the two institutions?
Yeah, and they understand, I mean, they've signed, in the bond purchase agreement, they've signed a, a number of representations that, you know, we're big boys, we understand. You know, this is, we understand that this is the only source of revenue. All of the documents contain rep, strong language to the effect that the city has no liability, the state has no. the state has no liability other than this, and really, they couldn't even come after the state, you know.
That leads me to my second question, because maybe I, I'm not an attorney, obviously, and so I've seen now the word sophisticated to describe these lenders in two different documents now. Does that have any particular legal consequence?
Yes, it does, yes.
Can you explain a little bit more about these two institutions, or what you know of them from the placement agent?
Yes, well, there, there are two. First of all, under federal securities laws, there's two categories of sophisticated investors. It's qualified institutional buyers, typically banks, or accredited investors. And these are normally institutions that purchase large blocks. We have the minimum increment of the bonds is $100,000. So, you know, that would take out the, sort of the average mom and pop investor. But we've specifically limited the sale of the bonds and the transfer of the bonds to these either qualified institutional buyers or accredited investors, and both of these institutions qualify, I think, as both. So, so there's that, that's, there is a legal definition of the institutions. And then, like I said, we've done things structurally to prevent the bonds from being outside of that. But they also indicate, and my first internet bank is in Indiana, and they, they do a lot of, this public finance corporation does a lot of investment of this type.
Okay.
And Sterling National Bank is in New York City, based in New York City. I think they're mainly in the boroughs and kind of the, that part, or, you know, southern part of New York. And they also apparently do, according to Michael Lambert, they look for these sorts of things. I mean, he knew to contact them about that, so. And they're sign, and like I said, they've signed representations that they have all the information they need to make a decision to invest, that they're able to bear the loss, the complete loss of the investment, bear all risk, so.
Thank you very much, that was my.
Okay.
So, let's see, where was I? Oh, okay, so this next table was what the incremental tax revenues that would have been, so the taxes over the baseline through 2015, 2016, and 2017. And then, the most interesting page, I think, is this next one, the debt service and estimated prepayment from surplus collections. So we've got our structure, and here's the, the first table is the principal and interest if it, bonds mature over that 20-year amortization. The second one shows a principal amortization from if revenues stay at 2018 levels. It shows an amortization paying off in about 15 years, and this would be from that surplus I told you about under that, that tax distribution agreement. So money comes in, goes first to debt service, then to reserve for next debt service to, you know, and then, and then goes into this surplus redemption. So, and the, the third projection is if revenue continues to come in at 2017 rates, and again, you'd end up with an early redemption. And then there was a stress test, which they performed, which assumes that you've got revenues from 2018 annually declining by 2.75 percent starting in 2021. So even then, we're still showing under that stress test, you know, from the surplus and early, earlier redemption, that the bonds wouldn't be fully amortized over that 20-year period. And he's given you net debt service schedule, aggregate debt service, the pricing summary. Wanted to just point out that the interest rate the two banks are offering is 4.375 percent.
Which is exceptional.
It's an exceptional interest rate, and it's much lower than any star bond issue that I've seen recently, by as much as 100 basis points, in some cases, or 50 basis points. And the reason for that is that you have an established district. You've got a revenue stream they can look at, so it's, it's a very, very attractive rate. And there's a detailed cost of issuance. This will all have to be approved by the Secretary of Commerce, and the total sources and uses, so it's breaking out for the star bond projects, plus cost of issuance, and the reserves and the other cost of financing. So I can deal with any questions. What your action on the ordinance will do is adopt, adopt the ordinance and authorize all of these documents to be executed and the bonds to be delivered on our projected closing date of March 28.
And that's in Wichita?
Well, the closing actually probably will just be by phone, but you, what we have to do at this point, we're having a meeting with the Secretary of Commerce on Friday, and hopefully, we'll be able to get their final approval, get final approval on the bond transcript from the Attorney General, and then, you know, so there's two pending state-level approvals, yeah.
Okay.
And so we bounced around as to which ordinance might be 2826-2019, and if we're at that moment to consider this one, it would be 2826-2019.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2826-2019.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2826-2019 on the star bond at the Sports of the World Bond Project. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item C, the governing body has asked to consider and approve an amendment to the ordinance regarding the sale of cereal malt beverages. If approved, this would be 2827-2019.
Yeah.
And Randy, I believe this is yours.
Sure.
All things beer.
And dogs.
All things beer.
Beer and dogs.
Beer and dogs.
Thirty-some years, a city attorney, and I've mastered.
CMB.
CMB. The Kansas Legislature changed the law, I think it was a couple years ago, so that effective April 1 of 2019, cereal malt beverage retailers will be allowed to sell beer that's stronger than 3.2 percent alcohol. We in Kansas normally think of, of stronger beers, the beer that you buy at a liquor store. So what the change will allow is that anyone that now sells CMB, a grocery store, a C store, there is, I think, a tavern in town that sells only 3.2 beer. Any of those establishments, Walmart, will be able to sell the, the enhanced CMB starting April 1. So we need to change our, our code to allow for the sale of the enhanced beer in the establishments that now only sell cereal malt beverage.
So this is simply bringing us in compliance with the state statute or the states?
State statute, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2827-2019.
Is there a second?
No second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2827-2019 in reference to the enhanced cereal malt beverage statute. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The governing, or item 10D, the governing body has asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution, abating a nuisance at 2615 North Main Street. If approved, it would be resolution number 2802-2019.
All right, you have the resolution before you in regards to an environmental nuisance, 2615 for garbage, trash, concrete, mattresses, and other miscellaneous items in and around the dumpster areas, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2802-2019.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2802. And any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10E, the governing body has asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution, abating an environmental nuisance at 903 Theron. If approved, it would be resolution number 2803-2019.
All right, this also is a environmental nuisance for contaminated weathered wood and other construction supplies and, and other materials spread throughout the property.
It's on.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2803-2019.
Second.
Second. It's been, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution 2803-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10F, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number 2804-2019, and remove an abatement, or remove a nuisance at 303 North Third.
Or North Second.
Second.
North Second.
For a green Toyota four-door vehicle for the speed of nuisance.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2804-2019.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2804-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item G, the governing body has asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, and if approved, it would be resolution number 2805-2019, and abate a nuisance at 901 Harold for a silver Jeep.
So I guess, are we saying this one's inoperable? Because it looks like it's got a registered.
That's right.
Tag on it, so.
Yeah, it's got a flat tire. It appears it may have been in an accident.
Oh, I see.
Inoperable, but.
And like on all of these, we've sent him a note, and we haven't heard anything back from him on, on this and everything?
That's right.
Okay. Just, because when I saw that, it was like, no.
And any of these, for example, you go ahead and pass this resolution, and they contact us or drive the vehicle in, and hey, I got it repaired.
Sure.
Case is closed.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2805-2019.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution 2805-2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Pardon the, the, the clean copies.
Thank you.
We got.
Here, just hand me the whole thing.
Let's see if we can get one.
What you have is the clean copies, highlighted copies with the strike through of the two changes that we referenced. As you look at the.
You might need to get a break to read this.
So I think we would characterize the changes as changes to form.
Oh, okay. They're not material at all.
They're not material.
It's just this.
But they were not.
This is the strike through.
Yep.
The one with the yellow.
Before such statutes.
All right.
But that would be the.
Get a jumpstart on the recycling effort.
Okay. You can see the two changes in yellow.
Why don't we come back to it when clean copies are available, when the right copy's available? If it wasn't good enough with these two changes, it isn't going to be good enough with, we still need another change. We'll come back to it. We've got plenty of agenda today.
Okay.
Yeah. 12A, is that where we are?
No, I think we're ready for 11A.
11A.
The governing body has asked to consider and approve an amendment to the development agreement for the North Borough replat of the first edition. Caleb?
Caleb just left.
Yeah, he's the guy that's got, all right. So let's find an issue that isn't him.
He's back.
He's back.
He's here.
Spin some plates on your feet or something.
Do you want me to take you down there?
Yeah, if you want.
Who's doing it?
Christina and Alicia.
Who's yours?
Yes. All right, North Borough. This is an amendment to the development agreement that's been accosted by the developer. And the development agreement had already previously been approved, and the developer's requesting a couple amendments as outlined in the staff report. In the background, the governing body is asked to review and consider an amendment to the development agreement for the North Borough replat of the first edition. The developer, Builders Development Corporation has provided changes to their development agreement for North Borough replat of the first edition. Staff has reviewed those changes and has also provided revisions to the amendment to the development agreement provided by the developer for review by the governing body. The, the first list that you see in there are the items listed by the developer that they would like to change. There are material things included in this that are, would be against what is currently adopted by code, and therefore, it's coming to you, that they have the right to come and request a waiver from, from those items in their development agreement, or negotiate those with you. Staff doesn't necessarily agree with these changes, as this is some of the reasons we've had issues before, and some of the other changes, though, we don't have any issues with. And so what you have attached to you in your agreement is, you have a option, alternative one, which is the governing body may approve the amendments to the North Borough replat of the first edition development agreement as proposed by the developer. That's option A, that was included in your staff report. Alternative two is the governing body may approve the amendments to the North Borough replat of the first edition development agreement as proposed by the developer with changes by the Neighborhood Development Services staff, which is option B. Or the governing body may approve the amendments of the North Borough replat of the first edition development agreement, either option A or option B with other additional amendments. Or the governing body may not approve the amendments to the North Borough replat of the first edition development agreement. Some things that have happened in this, because one of the major issues or hurdles that was just recently overcome was in regards to, they were in process of obtaining additional easement for a sewer main extension, which they, we were notified after the packets were sent out to you that they have obtained the easements. So that eliminates the item, section 3.4 in the third paragraph guarding easements, because that would be covered in their additional easement that they were able to obtain. The main issues that, of concern with staff in the changes is in regards to the request to eliminate, at the developer's request is in regards to the construction timeframe, that they would like to begin construction of the, the buildings prior to the infrastructure being installed. The code requires all infrastructure to be installed prior to construction of buildings or structures. Part of the reasons that, that the code has this, and we have been lenient in the past, five or six years ago, we, we, we had allowed that, and we ran into several major problems that occurred from, from that occurring before the infrastructure was installed, and it led to additional costs for the developer, and additional costs and, and time on the city's side on that. And as a, the city has a vested interest in all developments that happen, because ultimately, we take over the infrastructure that is put in place by the developers, and we want it to be correct and, and right, and that's one reason why I believe the code is written that way. And that's the major concern, is they're, they're requesting to be able to begin construction prior to the infrastructure improvements being done in this development request amendment. And so, staff does not recommend approval of those, just because that's the way the code is currently written on that, and, and because of the issues that we've went through in the past, staff would not recommend going through that. But he's, this is what the developer is requesting with this agreement. You have both options, alternative A and alternative B. Staff recommends alternative two, which is option B in your packets, to the development agreement, with the strike through in regards to the first item in, in regards to the easement, because that has been obtained.
What is, I can see where the sewer line could probably need to be in, because you got to make sure that the houses are up, so you can drain into the sewer. What, but as far as like the water line, it doesn't really make any difference.
Part of the issue is not, is not only the utilities under the, underground, going to the homes, it has a, a big impact on, and relocating those if they were placed incorrectly, but also the height of the curbs. but also the height of the curbs and getting the elevation set of the houses. It makes it, the developer then has to have surveys done several times. We'll want to verify all of those to make sure that it does meet the slope and drainage requirements that are required. And without that, it has led to issues that have cost or either we've had to give variances after the fact because at that point you can't really jack up a whole house or it'd be inappropriate to tear down a brand new house and have them redo it just because they were off by a foot.
Two inches.
Yeah, or two inches.
No, I understand that, but.
Is Mr. Snodgrass or representative of the developer available to speak to why they would be requesting this? Because it seems a little.
Mr. Snodgrass asked me to be here to explain that to you and I did question why it was this important and I can, I can tell you, first of all, I want you to have a little bit of background on this. We have been desperate as a community to provide wage appropriate housing in our community. In order to do that, we have to have some other tools available to us. Largely those come from the federal government. Finding developers who have, number one, the relationship and knowledge of how to utilize and access those federal programs and who have a desire to build in Garden City has been somewhat of a challenge. We have arrived at that with Builders Development Corporation. They have been extraordinarily friendly to our community. They recognize the opportunities here to the point that they've even built out into the greater Garden City area and are just finishing up projects in Ulyssus as a matter of fact, and starting projects in Lakin and Syracuse. Their investment in our community is huge because they are a Kansas city-based company. They've chosen to come out and believe in our growth, believe in our opportunity and invest here. The challenge with this particular project is the timeline. All of them are on very, very tight timelines with the federal funding. So they have administrators of these programs who come out, have to be on site, have to check off that, yes, you've hit the windows, if you will, of opportunity to move to the next step. They fund these projects ongoing, so it's a constant timeline check. Federal government eyes on it, developer eyes on it, cities eyes on it, obviously. So while I completely understand where Mr. Kettner's coming from and we don't ask you to break the rules, unfortunately in this situation, I'm not sure that this project can continue if we're not able to work with them on this, really on this timeline concern, if you will. The other side of this, I did ask to speak to their consultant who actually acts as the liaison between the federal funding programs and them and he said he does these all over the nation. He has never dealt with a city that wouldn't allow for the two projects to be happening simultaneously in order to meet the deadlines. He said it's never been an issue. It's never even come up over the time that he's been in his role doing consultancy for communities.
But when was this RHID originally started? I mean, it's been ongoing for a long time.
This isn't about the RHID. This is about a federal funding program. He's using USDA dollars. That's a very different type of project. RHID happens here. This is a federal program that has to meet deadlines.
So we built a relationship back in, what, this was originally twenty-fourteen with this developer? But then they just got this, no, am I wrong on that?
He's been just over a year on this project and working with it. As Alana said, the programs are different, but they're getting funding to build these structures for low to moderate income housing and they have grants through several different agencies to provide these. And what the issue is, is, as Alana said, is the timing on that. And the issue is that they didn't, I think they were crammed for time to get these turned in and did not realize that they didn't start their other processes quickly enough or otherwise in order to complete it on time. And so we have, we have a conflict between timelines, between what needs to be done and the timing that they need to have.
Yeah, our infrastructure isn't the only critical path in this project. Where time could have been, it's, it isn't city-inflicted time emergencies.
I understand that. I just wonder what the.
And the thirty-foot easement, requiring the thirty-foot easement, that was not in any of their plans initially because that's not typical. You can usually get it done in a ten-foot easement, which was already in place. So that is one of the things that has taken a little bit of time on their end, but we've been able to.
What, could they, could they get the curb and gutter first? Get that in? I mean, that, that is pretty critical to get the curb and gutter established so that you can set the house.
Right, that is, that is one of the most critical.
But I mean.
But before they put the curb and gutter, they have to have the other infrastructure in first. And so their timing is what they're running up the crunch with, is the timing of getting contractors to be able to install all of that in a timely manner that they, they need for their other part of that. And so unfortunately, that's where we're at. The issue is, like I said, is, is, we've run into issues and oftentimes it runs into additional costs for the developer on that end and they're on a very tight budget as it is and we've tried to, you know, we've worked with them utility-wise to be able to try to fit it in in a ten-foot easement. But the depth of those things are, can be precarious for working on, for safety concerns and so forth. And so they were able at the ninth hour to obtain the additional easement to make it safer and for the city to be able to maintain that and so.
But isn't the sewer line, is it going to be in the street?
The sewer line, or the internal ports of the subdivision, what they're, the easement we're discussing is, is the easement to get sewer to the property because they want to have the depth to have basements in the subdivision.
Well, but where's, is the sewer line behind the house or in front?
It's in the street, I believe.
So you'd have to go under the curb.
Yeah. So a lot of it is, is just they're pressed for time, they, their subdivision, getting their design submitted, approved and bid out is where they're running into.
And you talked about affordable housing, so, because, and this is one of those goals, so can you just speak a little bit more to that? I think that's an interesting consideration.
Yeah, so you guys obviously have heard multiple times, you know, all of the reasons why, why we struggle with, with new construction that meets that wage appropriate level, if you will. And again, a lot of that is just because of construction cost, because of infrastructure cost, quite frankly. I mean, it makes it a very, very significant challenge to get lot prices down low enough that we can then make the house wage appropriate, if you will. So again, by utilizing the federal programs, the federal government recognizes that. They've recognized that for generations and obviously that's where HUD comes in and the USDA actually administers some programs related specifically to rural areas and their need for agricultural workers, agricultural manufacturing workers, those types of things. So that is the type of housing that he's able to access those credits for. Largely their tax credit programs or sometimes their, their straight grant programs. If you're building this, we'll help with this and we'll match these funds or whatever the case may be. He has the relationship to leverage those dollars and that's a challenge. The federal government obviously wants to work with contractors they know know how to get the projects done, but also provide a good quality project to leave behind in the community. So they maintain ownership of their projects. They don't sell them off. So it's obviously important to them that they create a good project as well because they're going to own it and be responsible for the maintenance of it for the foreseeable future. So again, it does create an opportunity for us to create some new high-quality housing stock for those, those folks that would qualify for it. The other thing that's important about this particular parcel is that it is a very large parcel of ground. This is just one small piece of that development. This is a parcel that we have been working with developers over and over to try to interest them in it because once we get infrastructure to it, it creates significant additional opportunities for housing lots. So in, I think in some of the ways it's been drawn, up to two hundred additional units could land out there. So again, it creates the opportunity to add significant additional housing in, that we know.
And so the money side of all of this is figured out. I mean, it's not, there's no, the, between the RHID and the tax credits, the issue really is the timing and because there isn't a staff recommendation or even an option listed that wouldn't have you moving forward with covering the costs using the tools laid out here in the development agreement. It is, do you allow a incremental approach to the installation of the infrastructure, which would directly add cost? Or do you require, do you require what the code requires, which is the installation of that all at once? To me, that's the debate. Every, ninety-nine percent of this development agreement is an approval. It's whether or not you waive this incremental installation of the public infrastructure or what we will assume is the public infrastructure after it's constructed.
And it's only for this part in blue, is that correct? Because it looks like there's two other plots, so it's only this first part?
Yeah, it's phased in.
Phased in, okay, so it's only that first.
And Mr. Kettner, all the safety, all the situations that you described outside of just the concern that this will be additional cost to the developer and doing an incremental way have been satisfied. You don't feel like this is going to burden the city in the future with regard to any safety concerns or possible damage concerns or?
With the obtaining of the additional easement, that makes it possible for us to easily maintain and take care of that and well into the future. Part of the concern is, is the developer, these are low-income housing that is going in here and so he's on a very, very tight budget and if anything comes up wrong during this process, it's, our understanding is his budget is so tight that it could throw those costs off and would be either coming to the city to asking for assistance or it may kill the project if it has cost overruns that are incurred because utilities were incorrectly placed or something else because of an elevation issue. And I ran it. We hope that they can get it, if they did it right, they.
But that's less our responsibility, right? Ms. DeVal, can you speak to them? Would they, would they, are they going into this with their eyes wide open knowing that that could be the case and I hope that they wouldn't come back and?
Right, well, the real point of this question is that either the project does happen because we allow them to meet the timelines that are required by the federal tools they're utilizing or the project doesn't happen. I mean, as, as Mr. Kettner said, there are, that this has very direct silos of funds that have to be made available for the project to work. This is a nonprofit housing corporation that's building these. So they're not, they're not going to stake all of their other projects to make sure that a project in Garden City, Kansas, works. They can't do that. They can't jeopardize other projects.
I understand, but are they going to come back if they incur extra costs in six months and say, we need an additional?
Through their error?
Right.
If, if they were to make an error, I certainly wouldn't advise you to even hear that concern. I mean, I don't know how else to answer that. I can't say whether they would or would not.
I think that's just the case. I mean, it's eyes wide open.
I think if it was through a fault of theirs, I don't see why that would be your problem at all, Commissioner Burns. I don't see that.
Thank you. That's exactly the point that I needed to clarify.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that the governing body approve the amendments to the North Plat of the first edition development as proposed by the developer and the changes by the, by the Neighborhood and Development Services staff, which is option B, which is number two in the alternatives, if you want to reread that.
Is there a second?
So.
So that's.
Yeah, so I'm not really clear. So then does that give them what they're asking or?
No.
No.
It gives the city what they're asking.
It'd be to keep with the code.
Well, you're the city, so you'll decide. Your staff gave you an option, but you're the city.
I don't have that up. Can you read that option two?
The governing body may approve the amendments to the North Plat replat of the first edition development agreement as proposed by the developer with changes by the Neighborhood and Development Services staff, option B.
Okay.
And that's what I made the motion on.
Is there a second? Okay, it dies for lack of a second. So. Somebody want to make a different motion?
Yeah, I move that option alternative one, the governing body may approve the amendments to the North Plat or North Borough replat of the first edition development agreement as proposed by the developer, option A.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve option A and let the project go through. Is there any further discussion?
I look forward to the affordable housing. You and a lot of people.
All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carried.
Item twelve A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve projects involving the KDOT City Connecting Link Improvement Programs or C-Clip application for the state's fiscal years twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. The Kansas Department of Transportation has taken application for their C-Clip program. The deadline for that is March twenty-ninth of this year. That includes any highway that runs through the city that's inside the city corporate limits are eligible for that as long as you have an agreement between the state and us and we do have an agreement with them. The three categories for the C-Clip, the first one is service preparation, repairing surfaces and that's mainly a maintenance project that's mill and overlays, seal coats, those types of things, patching. The second one is pavement restoration and that is full depth reconstruction. I'll go back to surface real quick. The surface projects, the maximum amount for KDOT is three hundred thousand. And so the percentage for local is fifteen percent and KDOT's is eighty-five, but their maximum amount is three hundred thousand. On the pavement restoration, KDOT's maximum is a million dollars and again, it's fifteen percent local and eighty-five for state. And then the last category is geometric improvements and that's where you're changing anything that's safety or you're changing the dynamics of the road for turning lanes and those types of things and the KDOT maximum amount is a million dollars. And again, the percentage are fifteen percent, eighty-five percent. The governing body is asked to consider the following projects for the fiscal year of twenty-one and twenty-two, C-Clip applications. And the first one is Main Street. It's a multi-phase project. I do have a drawing in there that shows those three phases. And that would be an SP project and that's a two and a half inch to four inch mill and overlay with curb and gutter sidewalk and ADA ramp replacement as needed between Kansas Avenue and Walnut Street. That would be phase one. Phase two is similar to that. City share would be a hundred and seventy thousand five hundred and KDOT's would be three hundred thousand. There would be some curb and gutter and sidewalk replacement in this, but that's non-participating by KDOT. So we would have to pick up a hundred percent of that. The next project under consideration on Main Street is going full depth in those three phases. We didn't give you the third phase, but you were probably looking at similar numbers. But full depth, the, on that with nine inches of concrete, the city share would be two hundred thousand and KDOT's share would be a million. Curb and gutter sidewalk improvements and those types of things would be eligible in that category. The second option, the city's share for phase two for nine-inch concrete would be a hundred and ninety-five thousand and KDOT's would be a million. So when you look at those two categories, the city's share doesn't change much, but what will change when we, if we send either one of these in there is KDOT will send personnel down there and they will evaluate our road surface. And chances are, when they look at Main Street, they'll probably look at a mill and overlay as probably being their priority versus going full depth when you look at those. And then the last project on here for geometric improvement is Fulton Street and that is from Washington Street to Ballenger and that would install storm mains as needed. We do have high water in that area when it rains. We would reconstruct some curb and gutter, install inlets, build some sidewalks, repair curb and gutter along that stretch. The city's share on that would be four hundred and twenty-five thousand and KDOT's would be a million. The governing body also has a choice not to apply for an application for twenty-one and twenty-two and use what you do use normally and start repairing local streets like Campus and Fleming. So you do have an option of not, not doing a project. So staff, the alternatives for this is direct staff to apply for any combination of SP, PR, or a GI project. Alternative two would be a direct staff to apply for another qualifying project identified by the governing body. And three is deny, decide not to submit an application for this year.
I think they all look like desirable projects. I, and I, and certainly just continuing to fix, fix our own local streets is good too. But to me, looking at that Fulton. But to me, looking at that Fulton project, I think that's maybe the most needed. Am I, am I wrong in thinking that, or?
Now, we applied for this last year, and we changed it up a little bit this year, and it was close to making it. You can pick a number of these applications. We can apply for three applications if you want to. But if you choose to do that, we'll need to set our priorities. What is your number one project, number two, or number three? And on the SP, I was just giving you two of the phases to show you that all those phases run about the same. So you can pick any of those phases that you want, but you can only probably pick one of those SP projects. Now, we can all go all the way to phase three and do that instead, but staff is recommending starting at the north end and working south, so.
Sam, can you talk also about the major traffic, traffic wave bond? How does that work again?
If you're going to fund these, we usually do, we do bond the city's share, and it's usually a traffic, a special traffic wave bond for a debt service payment that we normally do. It's, it's a bond project.
It just gives you, you actually, when you issue the debt, you're issuing the debt together. It just, it's the authority under the state statute that allows you to issue debt for that, and we kind of lump it all together. We lump it all together.
Because it's not like a Geo bond, but it's a...
We, we do issue it with that Geo bond issuance, and it is backed by the full faith and credit of the city. It's just under the, you, there's only certain things you can issue debt for, and, and without, under your own authority, under a majority vote by the commission. There's a definition under major traffic way in the state statutes.
But in the past, we have applied for multiple different projects.
Last year, you did do that. You did one on Fulton, and you did one on Main Street. I believe Main Street was full depth reconstruction. We didn't do a mill and overlay. The last time we did a mill and overlay on Main Street was in the early 90s, so we've gotten 20 years out of it. One thing good about Main Street is we do have brick underneath the asphalt, which is above concrete pavement. So you have concrete, brick base with asphalt surface. So you do have a good base to work with on Main Street.
So if you apply for all three, is it all or nothing? Or can they choose to fund a specific project that you've said, "Hey, this is our most important," or?
Yeah, they will select, you can select as many as you want to, and then they're going to select their project that they want to fund, and they'll rate it. One thing that's happened, this used to be the CLINK program, and the CLINK program was a 50-50 split instead of a 15-85. And when they moved it to the 15-85, they increased the funding to 1 million. Now it's becoming a lot more competitive. All the cities now want to get that many dollars. So that's the reason we were turned down last year, is it's just become very competitive.
I'll make the motion that we direct staff to apply for any combination of the SP, PR, and GI projects specifically on the, I'll get specific, on the SP project, starting from Kansas and working your way to Walnut.
At the phase one?
On the phase one, I guess.
That would be alternative one?
Right.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve alternate one, which is direct staff to apply for any combination of SP, PR, and GI projects, phase one. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So let me, so I can clarify. So when you want us to write the application, we're going to do a mill and overlay SP project for phase one, and then we're also going to do a PR for full depth between Kansas and Walnut.
Right.
And the GI project.
And the GI.
All right, that is correct. Mr. Mayor, I request that we take a 10-minute break and be back in session at 3:05, if we could, please.
Okay. We'll take a 10-minute break. 3:05. 2:05. Back in session. We are ready for...
12B.
Where, do we want to, do we want to go back to our ordinance?
Well, if you've had time now with the other ordinance in front of you, I'll read. To identify the differences, maybe is a other thing. But just in case you haven't, or to the benefit of everybody else, I'll let Randy go through it.
I'm sure you read the ordinance before. The only two changes that have been made at the request of the developers' council are in the second whereas clause. I think you have the highlighted version, and in section one...
Hang on, Randy, and for everybody's benefit, we're back on 10A, the 130. Well, it had been the 130 public hearing. Now it's a consideration of the ordinance. So sorry, go ahead, Randy.
It's okay. And in section one, taking out the language, which before such statutes were repealed. So in two places, those, that language is taken out. That's the only change to the ordinance from the one that you had to review before the meeting.
Okay.
Correct?
Correct.
So this would be ordinance, I think, 28-28, if I'm...
28-27.
No, we already approved 28-27.
We had 28-27.
That was C1.
C1. 28-28, right? I'd studied that before.
Take it easy on the city clerk of the year.
All right, is there any other questions for Caleb on this? Basically, it's establishing the redevelopment district is what this motion is.
I appreciate the clarification and the learning that we all experienced. So I mean, it's, I think it's, and public learning knowledge, so.
Thank you for bringing your presentation that actually has more of a plan, and we'll look forward to the actual study when you come for the next step.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance 28-2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance number 28-28-2019 in reference to the establishment of a redevelopment district at the corner of Campus and Kansas area. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
12B, I think. 12B. Governing body is asked to consider and approve a real estate purchase agreement between the city of Garden City, Kansas, and Yonge, Keye, and Jay Keye. Randy, I'll let you speak to this, and then I might speak to it for a second.
Same here, too, if we need. City's been looking at this property for some time, and off and on, there have been some informal negotiations or discussions between Public Works Director and the owners of this property. The tract is approximately 12-acre parcel, which is located directly east of the utility service center, currently owned by the city. The location of the city's public utilities and the infrastructure for that service. This tract is directly east of that and would be, according to staff, a good choice for future expansion to include the Public Works Department, to kind of unitize or consolidate the city's departments in one area, and possibly then allow for sharing of services and fueling depots, that kind of thing. I approached the owners of the property and engaged in some discussions and negotiations, and we have arrived at the proposed purchase price of $525,000, less than what they had been offering it to the city for in the past few years. And I have developed the real estate purchase agreement. Proposed purchase price is what I just indicated. Proposed closing is in April, April 10th. If you had a question about where the funds were going to come from, if you approve the agreement, I'm sure Matt or Melinda could, could address that, but I've been... If you had a question about where the funds were going to come from, if you approve the agreement, I'm sure Matt or Melinda could address that, but I've been directed... I was directed to approve the, or prepare the agreement. I have, I've sent it to the proposed sellers, and they have agreed to sign it. In fact, they have signed it, so if you approve it, we'll proceed with closing in April.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the real estate purchase agreement.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we move forward with the purchase agreement. 12 point... 12.6...
5.2.
5.2 acres. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 12C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the zoo advisory board. Kristi? She's not here? She's at CPM, okay. So, the governing body has before them the packet of information. Taylor Freberg had moved out of the area, his appointment expired July 2019, and we, the recommendation from the zoo advisory board is to appoint Austin Love to complete Mr. Freberg's remaining term.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Austin Love to complete Mr. Freberg's remaining term as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Austin Love to the zoo advisory board. Any further discussion?
Is Mr. Love here? No?
No.
They did say he showed a ton of interest and called every day asking about the...
And I did, yeah, I did talk to him. He was very excited about being a part. It's kind of his first foray into city service.
All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 12D, Sheila Crane, Executive Director of Downtown Vision, Inc., is here to provide an update to the governing body, and I believe this is their annual report for 2018, which they've just recently presented at their annual meeting. So, Sheila, turn it over to you.
Right, Mayor, Commissioners, I'll make this brief because it's been a lot for you guys today, I know. We had the full report, which I think you've had a look at, so this is just some brief highlights, and I'll go through it quickly. We had 1,828 volunteer hours, which translated into $45,133.32. In the fourth quarter, I made 61 business visits to the downtown businesses. Those would be businesses that I either had not had the opportunity to meet, or just trying to follow up with all of them, what their plans were, challenges, concerns, anything like that. We had 10 new businesses move into downtown between May 1st and December 31st. On average, there's four new businesses per year that move into downtown, so this was a huge surge. And about seven of these businesses, we had a lot of contact with and helping them find space and whatnot. There were two others that relocated into the downtown area as well. We had 11 new memberships for 2018. Again, this would be between my time there, May and December, that we added. The occupancy rate last year was 89 percent, or 2017 was 89 percent, 2019 were up to 92 percent. And then, the downtown area, as it's defined by our incentives, specifically the downtown fund for the city and our IWW and Jump Start Fund. So, in that defined area, the sales topped 16 million in 2018. That's up about 3 percent over 2017. The city sales tax generated in that defined area would be $162,077.50. Private investment was $1,329.970, and public investment was $158,607. Permits were a little over 24,000. The net new jobs that came in with those 10 businesses was 53. Average, again, is usually about 20, 19 or 20. So, again, the influx in businesses, obviously, and obviously, the brewhouse added to that as well. In 2015, there was a strategic plan for Downtown Vision with some goals. At that time, there were only two businesses that were in the IWW loan program. Last year, we, at one point, had nine loans in that program, again, as somewhat, as part of this surge. But, anyway, so in the last three years, we went from two loans in the program to now eight, which is great. We're getting, actually, the fund is maxed out at this point. We don't have anybody waiting in line, but those funds do replenish on a monthly basis, so that's been great. Same thing with the Jump Start program. There was nobody in the program in 2015. We had two applicants come into that program in 2018. We did act a second pole system, we paid for a second pole system installation in Stevens Park. So, right now, on that southwest corner where the banners go up for the various events, there's now one on the northwest corner as well. And we have a lot of events that are very close to each other or overlap, so that will allow for both events to be advertised, and it also allows traffic going both directions to be able to see what's going on, and it prevents things from getting hung in trees in the park and that sort of thing. I've been meeting with retailers on a monthly basis, we're working on marketing and promotions and those things that are very important to them outside of specific events. Our reach with social media, we changed up some of the things that we were doing. And in average reach prior to May was around 2,000 to 4,000. We've increased that to between 12,000 and 47,000 for our reach, depending on what the event is. So, we've figured out how to do some of those things, and it's making a difference at these events. One of the other goals that was in that 2015 report, our strategy was trying to get perhaps one of those food trucks into a brick and mortar. And as you know, of any county economic development, has been strategic in working with not one, but two of those food trucks to get them into a brick and mortar. So, we're looking forward to seeing that come to completion as well. So, that's the brief overview.
Thank you.
What is the update on that? Because I know we talked about it with Pinky's. Where is it? Pinky's getting into a location?
As we've said before, they would require the Downtown Development Fund to be usable for the project, for the site that works the best for them in the downtown corridor. Unfortunately, the property taxes are in arrears on that building, which doesn't allow them to apply for those funds until those have been satisfied. We've been working with the building owner, who does not live in Kansas, as well as an attorney and his previous financial institution that he had utilized here in an attempt to get those taxes paid. They are four years in arrears, unfortunately. So, definitely a slip. I think that should have probably been caught, not, obviously, by the city, but that probably should have been caught and was not until we brought it to their attention that there was an issue there because we couldn't utilize those funds. So, we are working diligently to get that solved for them. We do have all of their other financing in place, all of their other, everything else they need is in place. They are, they are very, very excited to get started, unfortunately, beyond their control, but hopefully, we'll be able to solve it for them. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, good job.
Great, great report.
Thank you.
Item 12E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve one appointment to the city commission.
Okay.
Mayor, I wouldn't...
We just, I was just gonna say, we had pre-meeting, and each of the candidates presented to the city commission and to other members that attended, and it was very good, had some good points. We've got three good candidates, so now we'll take a little discussion, okay?
I was going to move to appoint Linda Adams to the city commission's vacant spot.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we appoint Linda Adams. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Two to two.
It didn't pass.
No.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Shannon Dick to the open position on the city commission.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we appoint Shannon Dick to the Phil Melvin Dale's commission spot. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Shannon Dick, you're the new appointee. From now till November, and then, from then, it'll be up to you. So, we will install you at the next meeting, which will be...
January. Easemetal till January.
Well, January, yeah, but the election is in November, I should say.
I would like to, I'd like to just thank the three people that came forward and submitted a letter. I know it's hard to do that, and I've done it before, and I know Mayor Fankhauser's done it before, and it's a hard thing to do and step forward, and I look forward to positive things in the future, and hopefully, you guys will run for office, so thank you.
Should probably say thank you over here. Thank you for considering me and letting me serve my community. I look forward to doing what we can do, and I look forward to working with the best staff that we have in Kansas. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Item 12F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the specific site location for a new clubhouse at Buffalo Dunes Golf Course. I believe we have representatives from the staff and the friends group here. So, I'll turn it over to whoever's talking.
Apparently, that's me, I guess. I apologize. I do serve on the Friends of Buffalo Dunes Board of Directors, and apparently Chuck is gonna pull the strings and let me be the puppet up here. So, as you know, we've been working on this project for quite some time. We are in a position, now, we did send out a request for proposals from area contractors several months ago just to get an idea that we were on the right path, that we could actually design something that we would be able to raise enough funds to pay for. We felt confident that we would be able to do that. Now, we're at the point where we just need you to tell us where you'd like, what is ultimately your clubhouse to be built. So, we suggested some sites that allow us to utilize the existing parking lot, which is obviously a huge savings. We don't see a huge disadvantage to any of the sites. There may be closer infrastructure, obviously, to options A and B. C and D may take a little more dirt work, just because you're getting into the bluffs and so forth, but that really has to be your decision. And once you let us know where you want that built, then we'll be ready to move forward with actual firm construction costs, including all of the site work and so forth that has to be done, and then we can start fundraising and get a clubhouse built, so.
Yeah, go ahead. The option 1A, is that the one that you're recommending?
We don't really, all of these sites are workable. All of these sites are workable from our standpoint. I think Jason has some preferences, and I would, I would definitely think you should let him give you some of, he and Clay's ideas on where it would be, but the Friends of the Dunes Board will yield to whatever decision.
Well, I went back to look at kind of the master plan and kind of the changes to the golf course, what we're looking at, and it didn't really... I mean, there's things that we're doing that's gonna change, but how that's gonna fit in with this, it didn't... So, I'd like, yes, I'd like to hear from Jason on what your recommendation would be, or your thinking is.
Good afternoon, and sorry to walk in late. I had an appointment in Dodge, as you can see. Wore sunscreen. So, the two spots that I think would serve best for our needs right now, and then also future, I mean, the first one was option C. That's probably gonna require some dirt work. And then, I think the fallback plan was option D. Those two with, I mean, with the plan to possibly build a new range, initial course on the north side of the property, that would function better.
And utilize, that utilizes the parking lot, I guess, to the...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. When we were originally talking about it, Clay and I liked area A, but once we kind of got in there and looked, there's a lot of greenage, there's a lot of other things that would have to happen there. But, I mean, option C is kind of, I think, where the consensus was from us, from Friends of Buffalo Dunes, and then people that we've kind of, I've kind of asked, as they've come out and played, what do you think about this side? What do you think about that side?
So, with the changes that you're looking at on the golf course, how would that fit in? Because I was trying to look at, you know, with the changes to our, how we're looking at changing the golf course.
Changing the nines.
Right. How's that gonna...
It's still not, it's still gonna, it's still gonna work. Right now, with this reversing of the nines, hole number nine will now be 18, so they'll still be coming by the clubhouse again. Right now, when they, when they come on hole number nine, they don't come by the clubhouse at all.
Right.
Is that what you're asking?
That, but starting out, though, if you go to C...
You're further away.
You're further away, and you're gonna have, you're gonna have quite a distance to get to the...
You're actually, I mean, if you, where we're at right now, by turning number one into 10 right here, by turning number one, we're still gonna be a little ways away. Right now, you would come off, you're gonna be coming off nine, going back by the clubhouse. So, I mean, all I want is a new clubhouse, I don't care.
But we have discussed that, Commissioners, since then, and it is, you're right. Option B actually puts it where you go, you start there, and you go by there at the, when you're making the turn to go to the back nine. It maybe would increase refreshment cells and those kind of things, and it gives staff an opportunity, obviously, to check out and see, make sure people are making the turn and so forth. But, but again, it's your, ultimately, it's yours, and any of those options can be made workable by the...
Yeah, and you've got land there, that gray area to the left of, where it says option B.
Yes, sir.
You've got all that, too.
I mean, it would, it would be a combination of, it would not just fit right there. It's gonna be a combination of both, both of that combined areas.
Or what about to the left?
Here?
Put the clubhouse down between the greens?
I mean, I guess we could. There's irrigation, there's a lot of things that are right there right now.
I mean, if Friends are more inclined with option C, if they think that's the best option, that's fine with me. I was just trying to look at what the new, how the new setup was, and then the options, and what, what the best fit would be, but... Because they didn't, you guys said, you make the decision, so I was trying to make the decision, but now, listening to see what... I mean, I can see option C, but still, it's gonna be kind of, you're...
And if you don't have a huge concern, it would not be a bad, bad option, maybe, to give us the leeway to check cost differential between B and C.
That's fine.
Because, you know, just to say that either of those would be acceptable by the city commission, depending on, because there could be significant cost overrides with option C that we would opt not to try to raise those additional funds, so.
And because the Friends of Buffalo Dunes is paying for the clubhouse, that's correct, right?
Correct. This is a, this is a private fundraising effort that will be done, much like a lot of the Friends of Lee Richardson Zoo projects have been. But, again, ultimately, will be owned by the city, so it needs to be built to what you want as well, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, there's no other questions. I'll make the motion that the Friends of Buffalo Dunes look into option, between option B and C of placing the new clubhouse in between those options, and whatever the best cost benefit is for that.
Is there a second to that motion? Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve somewhere between B and C. B or C, or a combination of both, how's that? And depending on costs of, of the building pad, I guess, would be the proper term. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, guys, good job. Good luck on the fundraising.
We're ready for consent. G1.
Yeah, I think we can go back. You wanna go back to the present, the pool presentation?
Oh, yeah.
Or do we wanna just...
No.
I think we, you know, go ahead and plow through.
Plow through.
Yeah, we could do the consent and then go back to B and finish up with that, and then...
Whatever you want.
The...
I mean, we're kind of right there.
Right there.
I know, Jennifer.
Twelve, G one through four is the consent agenda. There's no changes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve G one through four as presented.
Is there a second motion? There's been a mo, motion and second to approve the consent agenda, assent, consent agenda. G, G one through four. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
All right. Oh, I think we'll go back to the report of the city manager. Item B, Assistant City Manager Cunningham is here to provide the findings of the Big Pool Community Input Process. So, and just kind of for everyone's information, this is the culmination of quite a, quite a bit of work. And so this presentation won't be the typical length of our presentations during the regular meetings. This will be a little bit longer, more like a workshop, so it, it will be interesting, but it will be long.
Can I just ask as a point, so the expectation here at the end of this presentation is to help guide a discussion to develop an action and then that will be forthcoming in the summer.
This is certainly informational only. This is not set up to be a business item today. If you wanna begin thinking out loud individually or as a group, as to, at some point in time, the staff will need to narrow the pattern of options and the things you might be interested in us pursuing deeper so that you can consider down the road what the future of aquatics in Garden City might look like. At least publicly funded aquatics might look like. No obligation today to do that. Sit back and absorb. But community input as one thing you'll take into consideration in addition to other stuff you hear. The staff's assessment of the condition of the existing pool, you know, water use of different features. We'll, we'll geek out on a lot of technical stuff. This is community input stuff.
So I was going to go, when I started working through this and reading the twelve thousand comments, I had one intention in mind for this meeting. And when I was finished with this, my intention was entirely different. And so I decided to approach this and kind of take you guys down a different road with the results. And I took, I don't know, probably seven or eight slides out of this before coming before you that took out some of those very directed concepts. And I'm gonna leave you with a couple of things today that hopefully will lead us into a business item on April second. So, um, so this is the results of the Big Pool Community Input Process. Obviously, that sounds really simple. It was not simple, but it was enlightening. I can't say that there's probably too many other people who have had that much exposure to that many people across our community that quickly. And so I got to learn a lot about a lot of different people. So the first slide here is contacts. And I significantly underestimated probably the number of people that I actually had contact with. There were about fifty-eight hundred students that I had contact with and then the rest were community members. And so I will say that of all of the community presentations I had, I only had one session that was not attended. And it was a ten AM session on a Friday. Every other session, including the seven AM session, was attended by community members. In fact, I had one session that lasted almost three and a half hours on a Wednesday night with a group of community members that almost filled this chamber. And so people were engaged, people were out there, they were paying attention, and it was great. So this list is just a, a brief overview of the, the types of organizations and the schools. Everybody that we tried to hit throughout the community and the number of contacts. So how we tried to go about them, I'm sure all of you guys watched the video. I, I showed it to you guys. So the history, the improvements and the future, we had the presentation and I ensured that I gave every single presentation so that it was given the same. Now granted, I probably changed mannerisms or how I delivered it or something like that. And questions could be different depending on who attended, but I did every single presentation so that I ensured that I was able to provide the same information and answer any of the questions that were asked. We did survey emails to everyone. When I visited a school, it would go to the principal. The principal would send to all the teachers and then the teachers would facilitate their classrooms in doing the surveys so that we made sure every student actually did a survey. We used Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and then before the deadline was up, we did the second video with some of the project ideas that PEC had done for us, actually on the different landscapes. Two Garden City Telegram articles, which got a ton of feedback. And we really used those more towards our advantage of, okay, what are people asking? What are the types of questions that people who haven't heard this presentation are coming up with? So that then when I had Lauren record me giving a dry run of the video, I then went through a fact session where I actually answered all of those questions that people were posting on those articles. So giving people another option, another venue in which to hear. And I've talked to a lot of people who said, I saw you on channel eight giving this pool presentation. And I'm like, yeah, that was really, it was kind of odd just giving it to no one, but it worked. We hit a lot of additional people that, that route. So, and then several posts with graphics, which Lauren will tell you, that's the best way to get people to look at something, is send out a graphic. So that's what and where we did things. The next one is media reach, and I think this is important because, you know, our survey was online. You could do it in a paper, you could take a paper survey, but most people didn't. We had a total of five posts, two videos. One that was a shared video from the Spanish radio when I covered theirs. They actually did a live video of it, so we shared that video. We had two regular posts and then our most common audience was women, twenty-four to sixty-five. I, I would say that was probably fairly accurate, even in the people I went and talked to. Lots of teachers that fell into that category, women, twenty-four to sixty-five. And even the community members who came to the presentation, same thing. I did have somebody, some that fell outside that, but a, a lot fell into that category. I think the biggest thing to see here is the number of people we reached. Almost thirty-five thousand people reached through social media efforts over less than six weeks. From the time that we started, that started actually putting out social media stuff, to the time that we quit putting out social media stuff, it was only about six weeks. So thirty-five thousand people were reached in that time period. Most popular, by far, hands down, the first video that Lauren did with the history and then the improvements and, and the future of the pool. So, like it says here, we used a lot of the comments to our advantage. We wanted people to talk about it. We wanted people to say positive and negative things because that, that was our avenue into having conversations with them. So this is just some of the statistical information that we pull off of our Facebook. This is the first video and you can see the number of people that were reached with it and reactions, likes, comments, that sort of thing. This was for the actual, the community input sessions that we did and then the second video that we had. You can see these were much, these reached less people, but still reached quite a few. Okay, so then you have the Spanish radio one and then our, our input presentation that we actually put on there. And we actually came across doing Spanish radio because someone reached out on our Facebook and said, you say you care about the majority of the population, but you're not hitting the Spanish-speaking population. What, what are you gonna do to do that? I lucked out that that person was actually on the Community Health Advisory Board that made that comment. I happen to be the staff person for that, so I just reached out to her and said, hey, if you have ideas, let's get together, let's have this conversation. You tell me what you think is the best avenue, if you have other ways. And so she had some ideas, which was not this, but then a local attorney, a local attorney who speaks on Spanish radio quite frequently. He needed me to make a plea deal with him in municipal court. So I said, hey, since you're already coming here, I said, how would you take me to Spanish radio so that I can do? He's like, okay, but you only have fifteen minutes. Well, we ended up being there for like thirty-five minutes. It was great. They were fabulous. And they livestreamed the whole thing, so it was good. So of the survey responses, four thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven people. So when you think about that, if you say, we had about six thousand contacts, maybe more, maybe sixty-four hundred, somewhere in there. We got a huge response. And I get it, a lot of these are kids, but still, the community, a thousand forty-nine responses from our community, which is huge. I talked to school board members, I talked to teachers, I talked to a lot of people who said, we try and engage the parents from the entire school district and we get three hundred responses. And this is about their children. And we got a thousand forty-nine responses on the big pool. So I think that's pretty incredible. And then just some representations. We did make one mistake and I'm sort of frustrated in this mistake, but I'm gonna share it so that you guys can understand. We had a, a specific thing on both the third to sixth grade and the seventh to twelfth grade survey that asked people which category they fell into that's listed here. But we did not include this, even though I had several people review my survey, nobody caught that I didn't include that question on the one to the community. So I don't have that data. This data that's represented here is from student surveys only. Still a really good mix because you're saying three thousand, thirty-four hundred of the surveys were done by students. But still wanted to show this breakdown so you could see that it really is representative of our population. I mean, this is what we look like. So this is the first slide that really dives into questions that were on the survey. And so I'll just talk about a couple of different things on this slide that you're gonna see repeat over and over. When you see the number, the N, obviously that's the number of people we're talking about, we're surveyed. So we're talking on this one about the community survey. And the question being asked here is, do you consider swimming, swimming recreation water facility to be an important service that the city of Garden City should provide? Because one of the questions that we were pondering, right, is should we consider providing this service at all? Or should we just get out of the swimming business entirely? And as you can see, one was the highest, most important, and five was the least important. And you can see here that representative by age, but it doesn't really matter. Eighty percent of our community, from zero to five, all the way up to fifty-six years old, believe this is an important service that we should be providing. That you all should be providing to this community. And so I think that's something for you to take away from this is, swimming is important. And swimming is a service that the city or the community that lives here wants you to continue to provide. Maybe in a different way, but they want you to continue to provide that. And so that's kind of the takeaway and just good, I mean, I, I kind of assumed this is what you would hear. But it was loud and clear in all the meetings that there was no way we could take away swimming. The next one is what type of facility would be important to you? And so we had water park on there, we had community pools, which when we talked about community pools, this was multiple swimming facilities, kind of like your backyard swimming pool. And then the splash parks that we talked about that doesn't actually have swimming with it. And then a facility like the big pool. And what we tried to talk about with a facility like the big pool is that it doesn't have to be as big. We could use a less, less water in the new facility. But that had, what people got at with this description is mostly swimming. Not broken up into a lot of different things. They wanted activities there. They, you know, we hit on things which we'll get to, like big slides or lazy river or things that went with it. But they wanted to make sure there was an area for purely swimming. And that's how we likened it to a facility similar to the big pool. And not to be mistaken for keeping the big pool. And we, we covered that several times, although some people did mention that in their comments. We covered that several times. We don't mean keeping it. We mean something similar to that. And so the takeaway from, from this is that people would like a facility, just like the big pool. That's, that would, that's what they drove home in most of the conversations that we had. They would like it to be updated, they would like it to have more activities. And the, where we saw a, a deviation in this was for splash parks when it came to two different age groups. And that was the young population, if it was a family or a parent or a child in that, in the category of zero to five. Splash parks became important. They became important again when you got over to, you know, kind of the retired age, maybe the grandparents who are taking kids. But in the median age range, when you talk about high schoolers, they couldn't understand why anyone would ever even consider building a splash park. Why, city, why would you do that? That doesn't make any sense to us. No one's gonna use that. And so the other thing that I think is really interesting about this type of facility that I learned through this process is that our community is somewhat unaware of the community we live in. So splash parks are also important to people who are living in poverty. Because two dollars, we heard over and over again that two dollars was too expensive. And two dollars being too expensive, when I said that in a high school class, they looked at me like I had lost my mind. Unaware of maybe the situation that some of their classmates and some of the people who are younger than them are living in. And so a splash park provides that need, which is free. Something that people can do, you may not be able to do the other. And so you may be twelve years old and a splash park may not be what you would choose, but it was free. So that was kind of some of the stuff we saw in here, but for the most part, you can see the, the red line takes away from the other lines in, in that a facility like the big pool was, was the important facility. I don't know why it keeps skipping back. Okay. So on this one, this is the students, obviously three thousand, three hundred and eighty-three. So this combines the third to sixth and seventh to twelfth grade surveys. And this is attendance at the big pool. And as you can see, attendance is strongly correlated to the age of the child. Attendance at the big pool drops more than seventy-five percent around eighth grade. So significant drop around eighth grade. And honestly, if you look at the comments from the survey, that's the same thing you would see. You would see kids asking for things like go-karts, laser tag, baseball parks, whatever it may be, everything other than swimming. Because they get to that phase where they're like, their response is where I work, I'm busy, it doesn't interest me. Hi, a lot of people saying that they don't know how to swim. And so things like that, but as you get older, it becomes less simple. Sorry, guys. For some reason, my clicker keeps skipping a slide. Okay, so features at the big pool. This is specifically the features that are at the big pool now. We wanted to gauge the things that they liked about the pool that we have. Why is it important or the people who are using it? Because most likely the people who are using it are gonna be the ones who continue to use it. We're just hoping that more people, we can gain more users of whatever facility we build if we look at what's important to them. So, hands down, across the board, all age groups, the big pool's main function is a cool place to hang out, meet up with my friends and, and hang out. It doesn't matter what we're doing there, we wanna hang out. And you can see that's the purple line, and the purple line really takes away from everything else. When you look at the fact that we're talking about a water recreation facility and all of the other things have to do with swimming, and this thing is very different than just swimming.
But it's important though, it speaks to, we need more community gathering spaces for kids.
Yes, yes, yes.
That's future discussions.
But yeah, I mean, that, that was what we talked about in a lot of these classrooms. That is what a lot of kids said, is we need more stuff to do. And a lot of the, a lot of the discussions, once I explained to them that it was probably, if we did something, it was probably gonna be water recreation. They said, well, what about having the bathhouse function in off-season as something else? Could it be a community space? Could it be an arcade? Or could it be something else that we could go to when the pool's not open and meet up with our friends? I don't know what that looks like, but those are just some ideas that kids are having, cause they're looking for somewhere to go. They're looking for a space. But the age of the child really factored into what they found important. Concession stand was another one that, that they found to be important and they talk about food throughout the comments. The big slides, big slides were the number one comment. If you looked through the, through the comments, big slides, big slides, big slides. Or lazy river, not always spelled correctly, so you can't search for it, you actually have to read every comment. So as they get older, really, it just becomes something that they just wanna hang out with their friends. They want something to do. And even the young kids, I mean, you see, it, it ties pretty heavily with the slides and the concession stand. But you get tho, you get some food, you get some good food and you give them a spot to hang out and they're probably gonna be pretty happy.
I don't think the cheese is real, but I'm not sure.
I think that that probably, and I don't know, maybe you can speak to this with your community meetings too. But I heard from parents and, and grandparents and, and a school crossing guard that said, we need more things for kids. More gathering places that are safe and centrally located and things. So I, I would almost wonder if that doesn't extrapolate against, across age ranges.
It does. It, from, from young to old, you know, a lot of kids, from young to old, kids asked for a trampoline park. That was consistent, so I wish, I wish the developers were still here to hear that because I think that was one of the things they were considering. The kids were, really wanted a trampoline park, cause they felt like that was something they had done somewhere else. But then, yeah, they named off all kinds of other facilities that would give them an indoor or year-round place that they could hang out. And it wasn't so much indoor swimming that they, that talked about. They talked more about like laser tag and skate par, or skating, roller skating, which I didn't even know was cool anymore, but apparently it's like the cool thing now. It's come back from when I was, you know, it was cool when I was in high school or maybe junior high. And now it's kind of, I guess, come back to that. But, yeah, exactly. Every single conversation I had with students was talking about facilities where they could do stuff. Not so much with the community and the community sessions. They were highly directly focused on what we were talking about, which was the big pool and swimming.
You know, one thing, you need to share this with the recommission and the why. I mean, you know, they could provide a lot more. I mean, you know, they could provide a lot more of those facilities.
We, we, I have had some serious discussions with Erin, and I do think that that's in his long-range plan. In fact, him and I had a meeting a week and a half ago. He actually has some really big plans for the rec that he'd like to accomplish. I don't know what those, you know, I don't know how, you know, having the ideas and then getting them into place sometimes is more difficult. But, you know, and then we invited the why to participate in a session with us, and we didn't actually have anyone come. So I don't know what their position is on anything, can't speak to that. But yeah, definitely, I think there's a lot of people who could get involved in providing those types of services. And I don't think that City of Garden City should, should be, you know, responsible for creating all the services for third to twelfth graders to have fun. But the just, this is something for you guys to digest as you think through this process of what you are going to build or create for the community moving forward, because you do have that opportunity. So this next one is, this is a part of the community survey, and the importance of the pool type and location for a new water recreation facility. So as you guys remember, we talked about more than just the current location. We talked about places all over the community. And really, the takeaway here was that having a pool is the highest importance of anything, which is what we talked about on that first slide. A splash pad's important if you have young kids or if you're a grandparent. And the size of the facility is also important. They want, they want a larger swimming facility. They don't want us to do a neighborhood pool-type swimming facility. Number and location of the facility, really not important. We thought that would be more important. We thought location would come, come out as being something that really had an effect on people's attendance. But no, it was actually more nostalgia for it to be where it is, for the current location, even though it may not be the best access for the kids who live in our community. Okay, the next one is importance of pool features for a new water recreation facility. So we were trying to get out, what do people value? If we are gonna build something new, what, what must it include? What can we not go without? And you can see here that age group, age group obviously matters. You can see large slides are important to that, like five to forty range. And that came out in the surveys. You saw that across the board. Third, third through twelfth grade, every single kid pretty much wrote that they wanted big slides. And they wanted multiple slides, or they wanted a tunnel slide, or some sort of really cool slide that they could go down. Or like Parrot Cove, or you know, whatever it may be. Baby pool for those younger kids, or for those younger kids in the household, those might be parents with kids in that age range, having a baby pool or a feature described separately from some sort of regular swimming area. You can see the red kind of pinpoint some of the other things. Open year-round was okay for some of the other age groups, really low as you got older, which that's the age group I expected to be higher, because that's the age group that you would think that if we were going to have a year-round facility other than for competition swimming, who else would use that? And in my mind, I think people wanting to use it for exercise, or people wanting to lap swim, which tends to be our over fifty-six crowd. That's our age group that typically signs up for those things with us. And it just didn't, it just didn't show up with them as being important. Competition lanes, I don't know if, this, this came in low, and obviously, we provide this service now. I think this is more, and I kind of explained this to the group that, the swim team, was that because we surveyed so many people, their voice became much smaller in the bigger crowd. Their, their voice was loud. They definitely had a lot to say. We had a meeting solely for the swim team. And then I had several meetings with the high school and some of the people who work at the high school and that sort of thing. And their voice was very loud. It just, in the makeup of the entire scheme of things, when you take forty-five hundred people, and you say, okay, well, we maybe have seventy, eighty kids on the swim team and use two parents apiece, so a hundred and sixty and eighty. I mean, you're, you're just not making a dent in the overall survey results. And so that's, that's why I think you see these numbers. And not because I don't think competition lanes are important, just because I think that that was how the survey felt. So importance of pool amenities for a new water recreation facility. And this is, obviously, people have a lot of important things here. But the high importance is placed on various amenities such as upgraded shower and locker rooms and shade. And shade and seating, if you've used our facility, we knew that was gonna be something that people brought up, because we don't have a lot of shade and seating. And especially for those younger kids or those parents who are trying to keep track of younger kids, it becomes really hot, or not a place to sit down and, and be with them and eat and do that kind of stuff. And so in a new facility, those things rated really high. Shade, super high, eighty percent, thereabout. Same thing with upgraded shower, shower rooms, which would probably be a given with, with a new project. But yeah, all of this stuff, this, this stuff kind of came out. And we had, we had a lot of other things on here. We had the slides on here. We had the, the other features, and these are really the, the bulk of where you, where you see people focusing their attention. Okay, so how likely are you or a member of your family to use, and these are different activities? So we were trying to figure out where do people spend their time, or what age group spends their time doing different things? The majority of people are just using the pool for open swim. Family night would fall sort of in that open swim, but as a, more as a group. And that's what the majority of people are using it for. I don't think swim lessons got a fair shake here, because currently, in talking to Erin, people are not using the swimming lessons program like they do in other communities, because we're offering them in the evenings. Sometimes they're coinciding with the pool still being open, so that we can offer lap swim and things like that. But they're not able to offer them in the morning, because the water's much too cold, and nobody will take them. And so I think probably in another community, you might have gotten a bigger result from swimming lessons in talking to Erin. But because it's not utilized, because of the temperature of the facility, people have kind of said, ah, I'm out on swimming lessons.
I know the why when they offer their free night through the Finnet Foundation, that those are packed.
Yes.
Because they can't even get enough instructors for it.
Yep.
You know, how do you, it says open swim.
Yep.
But yet, the majority of the people did it for social reasons.
Yeah, so open swim is just basically the regular.
Hanging out, in the water.
Yep, just hanging out in the water. Yep, just, just open swim, no, no programming.
Actually swimming, probably.
Right, yep, exactly.
Just get in the water, cool off, get out, talk to your friends.
Or walk around the pool.
See how you look. Okay.
It hadn't, it hadn't changed.
So this is kind of how we broke down. We looked at the four different facilities that we kind of put out there, or the four different concepts that we put out there by location. People, obviously, a facility like the pool or a water park, people were good with them in any location. That doesn't work necessarily, but that's okay. We kind of wanted to get a feel for what they thought. The neighborhood pools were kind of segregated to certain locations. Same thing with splash parks. And I thought the information on even the splash parks was interesting when it all was said and done. But what we've seen is that mostly people want a facility like the big pool. And honestly, they don't care where you put it, as long as there's space for it. And I don't think, looking at all of our options, there's not a whole lot of locations that we can put a facility like the big pool. So that's what we take away from that.
Right in the middle of downtown, huh?
Yep. So this is a, what we learned.
Leave the tree we just planted.
The community feels water recreation is important. They want a facility like the big pool, but updated. Households with young children have a greater need for splash parks. They're more interested in them. And I had moms grab me and say, I really like the splash park idea. But then I had parents of high schoolers grab me and say, what are you thinking? Who, what, what is this splash park that you talked about? Like, who would want that? And I'm like, oh, trust me, let me just tell you. But you know, it just kind of depends. It depends on where your kids are at in life, because that affects what you want. What kids value changes as they get older. But hanging out is always important. I mean, even in the third grade, hanging out is important. They wanna hang out with their friends. Even my three-and-a-half-year-old cares more about, can I hang out with my neighbor friends than pretty much anything else? So I think that's just something we can ingrain, and that's what they're gonna use, whatever facility we, we build. Location and proximity home, not as important. I will tell you, when I visited the Neighborhood Learning Center up on Mary Street, that was important to them. When I had that conversation with them about proximity to where they're living, that was important. And when I went to some of the schools, the kids voiced that as being something that was important. It didn't turn out in the surveys in that way. But when I had conversations with people and talked about different locations, there were definitely places where you could see value in it. Same thing, uses is gonna be different based on where you put it, and whether it's big or small, or, or the type of age group that it affects. If it's a splash park in a certain area, it may get a lot of use by young families and young kids. If it's a pool in that area, it may get less use by really, you know, if it doesn't have like a baby pool or something like that, it may get less use by young families. Shade, seating, bathhouse, those are the most important, as well as slides and places for kids to play. So then we, I wanted to figure out a way, most of what, most of what I showed you to date came directly from survey questions that we asked. But I wanted to find a way to depict as much from the comments as I could. I don't know how many of you had a chance to read all twelve thousand comments. But it's time-consuming, and I didn't know if you would be able to do that before this meeting. And so I actually went through the comment sections. I went through them, and also Jared went through them, Smith, I don't know if he's in here still. But he and I both read every single comment and tallied what category it fell in, so that we could actually come up with responses from the comments. The important part about this, this information that you're gonna get is I want you to pay attention to total respondents, which is the number of people who filled out the survey total. The ones that answered this particular question. And then we have a part that says relevant. And the reason we have relevant is because on some of these questions, someone may have put, I don't know, I don't care, don't mess this up, good job, coach. Or things like that, things that we weren't, we couldn't actually tie to any specific data. So we threw those out, so that they wouldn't, so that it wouldn't look like we had seventeen hundred responses, and they all wanted more features. We wanted it to actually look like the comments. So this is third to sixth grade, and the question was, what would you, what would make you visit the pool more? And this is in order of the things that they list, that, that came out the highest. So more features, and that was just some, that was the language they used, more features. And then specifically slides and lazy river, and then cost. And that's really interesting, third to sixth grade, that cost was up there that high. And when I say cost, they weren't specifically saying about what they wanted us to charge. They were saying, you're charging too much. Either make it a dollar, or make it free, or make a free day, or, you know, things like that. They were targeting, this third to sixth grade group was targeting at, make this more affordable for me. So I think that's important for you guys to think about as you, you think about what kind of project you do. So the next one is, this is seventh to twelfth grade. Now, this is kind of interesting, seven, seventeen hundred respondents. Eight hundred and twenty-five answered this question, another, under, only a hundred and forty are relevant. Now, not, we don't want anyone to feel bad. Now, the reason we say relevant also is because if it was something like laser tag or go-karts, we didn't specifically create sections for those, because every one of those would have been a section of their own, and it would have phased out a lot of the data. So we went with specifically related to the question that we're asking, which is, what would make you visit the big pool? More features and cleanliness. So they believed, a lot of kids believed in this age group, that it was unclean.
The pool, the pool, or the?
The pool, no, the pool, the pool itself.
If you read the comments, yeah.
Yeah, they were.
I will tell you, that is not, that's a perception. That's not accurate. The pool is probably the cleanest that it's ever been. We have a machine that typically was running all night. We had someone who was coming in and cleaning every morning. But reading their comments, they would say things like, my mom never took me because she said it wasn't clean. So I think this is a perceived thing from times ago, when maybe it wasn't clean, or we weren't able to keep it clean, or there were other things going on, that has stuck with this particular age group. Not so much with the younger kids, it's not still there, because they've actually used it when it's been cleaner. But this age group, and even some in the community survey, it's very dirty. It's just an extremely dirty place. I can't believe you would go there, please clean the bugs out. You know, I mean, just, just funny comments like that, but very serious in that it captured, you know, people. Now, granted, there were a hundred and forty relevant comments out of, so about ten percent were relevant. So then you say, of the ten percent that were relevant, you know, about half of those said cleanliness. The next one is seventh to twelfth grade, and what would make you visit it more? We, in this group, there were actually a thousand relevant comments. So a lot more that actually fit into the category or, or fit towards this, more features. They use the same language, more features. And those more features could be anything, we don't know, because they use that exact language. And then cleanliness and slides. Slides were a big one. If you could tell the city commissioners anything about what you want them to do with this project, what would it be? Again, a low number of relevant comments. There were a lot of comments that they think you're doing a good job. They say, keep going, you got this, just make the right decision. There was a lot of stuff like that. There were a lot of funny ones that were like, I don't care, why are you asking me? Or, it doesn't matter to me, or I'm too busy, or whatever it may be. So relevant comments, these are the things that came up. And so interestingly enough, non-water was like forty-some percent of the relevant comments. So you only have about a hundred and thirty that fall into the other, and of the hundred and thirty that fall into the other, a hundred and thirty responses, you have indoor and multiple locations. And obviously, you have your swim team in this group, so you're gonna have their respondents in here. So when you're looking at a hundred and thirty responses, an indoor facility accounting for the swim team, that's gonna show up a lot more as well. Whoops, again, it wants to skip. Okay, the next one is, the question was, if you never visited the big pool last season, why? Why was your answer never? And this is in the community. There were four hundred and seven relevant responses of the five hundred and four that actually answered. Not everyone answered this one, because not everybody said never. Cleanliness, this came up again, this was one of the big ones. Event programming, so I had a lot of comments regarding event programming. And that was specifically related to them wanting adult nights, or time when we didn't allow kids to come in. Some of it was just the opposite. They wanted specific time, they really liked that eleven-year-old and under programming that we did in the morning, and they wanted more of that, where they could go in between naps, or when they could go at times that were more convenient for their families. So event and programming. And then shade and seating, obviously, we're talking about parents for the most part in this group, or people who are, are older and they want shade and seating. And then cost, here, we heard it again, here, keep it low, charge a dollar. Two dollars is too expensive, I can't afford a family of six, or we can't go on a regular basis, or whatever it may be.
Do you think a dollar is the cut point? Is that your consensus?
No, really and truly, what I think I learned from this is you're going to have to come up with some concept that allows an option for people who can afford nothing, and for people who can afford something. Because you're not going to set, the families who can afford the two dollars and are talking about the big slides and the lazy river and all of that kind of stuff, and even the families who can on occasion afford the treat, they want the big slides and lazy river and all that kind of stuff too. But it's more of a treat for them. But they still need somewhere to cool off when they don't have air conditioning and they can't afford two dollars. So I think that's something you guys are really gonna have to think about when you think about this. Even if some of this stuff may not be, have come out as popular, or may not be for everyone, you kind of are gonna have to mix and match this process to give what you believe the entire community needs.
But I even noticed in some of the comments that they could go to other communities and pay a dollar for a smaller facility. I mean, so we, we kind of have to weigh those options, where they can go, I read a number of comments where it's like, well, I can go over to this community and pay a dollar and get into a smaller facility and that type of thing. So it, you're, you're.
It's like weighing usage, and what do you want, usage and all those.
I saw, a lot of them said they went to Holcombe.
Holcombe, Holcombe is a, is a facility that people use on a regular basis.
Is it cleaner?
It's warmer, it's. Perception, maybe, that it's cleaner. I think what I, in talking to some of those from, the people from Holcombe, and then also some of the people who said they went to Holcombe, ability to keep track of their kids, because the space, the surface area. Yeah, and in talking to the guy who runs the Holcombe pool, he said lifeguards tell him that they would rather work for him, because the risk factor of trying to save someone out of the deep end of the big pool is pretty overwhelming for someone who's sixteen versus someone trying to save someone in the Holcombe pool, which isn't nearly as daunting of a task. And so that's something that, he gets a lot more life. And so that's something that, he gets a lot more lifeguard applicants than we do for a much smaller facility where they hire a lot fewer lifeguards. And that was directly from him, so. Why does it keep doing that? This button made me crazy. Okay, so what would make you visit the big pool more? This was the community survey. Nine hundred and thirty-six answered this question, and five hundred and seventy were relevant. Even in this community age group, more features. You see that, more features again. And when they say more features, I'm not totally sure what that means. But when they listed, when in categories they were able to list things out, we, the majority of things that we saw were slides and lazy river. Lazy river was a, other than slides, I mean, you kind of expect slides because we have slides and that's something that people talk about. But lazy river was a really big deal. That was something that people were really interested in. And a couple kids came up with a few other concepts that were like a surfing center, or something like that. Or, the other thing that came up a lot was that our big pool has these big slides, which kids want even bigger. But then there was this age group that was like, "I'm under forty-two inches tall, or forty-eight inches tall, or whatever, and I can't use the bigger slides." And so, why couldn't there be an area where there were slides that were a little more accommodating to kids who, they, they said for kids that are seven and eight years old? They more mean height-wise and requirements in that sense, but they're just looking for another activity to do because they can't access that activity. So. Events and programming with this group, you know, some of them wanted more programming for older people, or for air, air, times when there weren't kids around. Shade and seating, slides, and there you see it again, lazy river. Whether it was spelled correctly or not, we counted those out, so. If you could tell the city commissioners anything, and this comes directly from your community respondents, five hundred and ninety-seven answered and three hundred and fifty-four were relevant. Keep the big pool. This was the first time that we heard that response. Keep the big pool. Now, I had kids say it randomly here and there throughout surveys, but really, I can tell you that the people who responded to this keep the big pool did not come to a presentation. I, I can almost hands down promise you they did not come to a presentation, and I don't even believe they listened to my presentation, the online version. And the reason I say that is because in every single community presentation I had, there was somebody that said, "You need to keep the big pool." And I said, "Okay, well, let's break that down, let's talk about it, let's talk about what that looks like, and at the end, let's see if that's what you still think." And we went through that entire process. And I had multiple people come up to me after those presentations and say, "I came to this meeting to tell you that you needed to keep the big pool. I am here to tell you now, we need to figure out a way to, to do it better. We need to have swimming, this is not the answer, it's lived its life, let's figure out what to do next." Now, if I didn't get to have that conversation, it makes it a lot more difficult because they're missing out on all of these important things that we're considering, like cost and water, and all of the other things that factor into this decision. But those that listened to the presentation, they didn't respond this way, I can promise you. But there was a big group in this respondents, in the community section, that said, "Keep the big pool." The community respondents also were more interested in multiple locations, so maybe having a pool and some splash parks, or having more than one pool, or something of that nature. More access is what they were interested in. And then there was a big group that was non-water. It either goes to sides, or doesn't go at all. Okay, so, most talked about, and this, this resonated in both places. In the discussions, this is what people were actually saying, and in the surveys. Slides, lazy river, cost, more features, facility like the big pool, shade seating and bathhouse. These are the things that you can, you can put all your marbles in these and know that you're hitting ninety-five percent of the people that we talked to. And then something else that I included in here is the consistency in, among non-users, because that's really important, right? We're only seeing three hundred people a day, and the whole, part of this whole discussion is, "Well, if we're gonna do something different, we need more than three, three hundred people a day to use it." So what is the consistency among people who aren't using it? Unable to swim, they either work, or they're busy, or their parents work or are busy. There were a lot of kids that said, "My mom works too much, or my dad works too much, and I can't get there." Indoor facility, there's, there was a group that was, said, "You know, I would only use it if it was indoor." Cold water, that was a very consistent one across the board, is that it was very cold. I don't like swimming, and the expense.
What, what is the temperature of that water?
Well, we pump in, we pump in two hundred thousand gallons a day at fifty-five degrees. At fifty-five degrees, two hundred thousand gallons a day.
And it doesn't go to the bottom.
And it doesn't go to the bottom, no, it's very cold. I mean, I would say, it's, yeah, it's, it's, in my opinion, it's painfully cold. I would not get in, but my three-year-old thinks it's fine, and you know, I mean, depending on the age of the kid. Younger kids didn't notice when I asked school kids, "Do you think it's cold?" The younger the kid, the less likely they thought it was cold. The older the kid, the more likely they thought it was cold.
And outdoor air temperature makes a huge difference.
So, the one of the things that Matt asked me early on was, "Well, if it's over eighty-five, does it make a difference?" No. It only makes a difference if it's only, if it's over ninety-five. It's, if it's over ninety-five, the place will be packed. If it's under ninety-five, not so much. Because that eighty-five to ninety-five isn't hot enough to make that big of a difference for them. So what did I hear when I was out talking to people? Swimming's a priority. Waterpark-like features are important, but it doesn't need to be a waterpark. So I heard Hayes and Colby a lot, and I just kinda looked at those parks to see what they look like. And they really are just a swimming facility with a lazy river, some different sizes of slides, but mostly swimming is the focus of those, and relatively inexpensive for the features that they offer. And so I listed some of those there, lazy river, slide, good shade and seating. Segregated baby pool and toddler area was important when I talked to groups of people. And then at least a fifty-meter competition lane like we have now because it's the only one in the area, and so being able to hold competitions there is important to, to those who use it currently. Splash parks are really good for parents and young kids, impoverished families, kids without transportation. It's very unimportant for families with older kids and more expendable income. Indoor facility is really important to swim coaches, parents and students. Unimportant to those unrelated to the sport, or the people who aren't familiar with the sport. And then, what, what I said earlier, which is I feel like our community in their segregated groups is unaware of the rest of the community. And I found that when I went to visit because I was unaware. Visiting places like Gertrude Walker, or VO and Charles Stone, and hearing the things that were important to those kids. The fact that VO and Charles Stone kids were screaming and yelling and excited that you were gonna put a playground over there, really spoke to me in a way that I wasn't prepared for. I didn't know that that's how the community felt. I didn't know that there was a large group in the, up at the neighborhood learning center that valued a splash park because they could wear their regular clothing into the splash park and it was not a problem. They also highly valued us considering that as part of whatever we do, is allowing them to swim in their regular swimwear. But within these segments, each segment was unaware. When I would ask a group that had no swim people in it, no swim team members or no parents, they were like, "Why would you build an indoor facility?" Well, because it's important to these people over here. Or I would visit with someone, a group that had no young kids and no parents of young kids, and I would talk about a splash park, and their eyes would glaze over and they would say, "Don't you dare basically take up land for a splash park that no one is ever going to use. It's just gonna sit there." And so I think all of these people are, are really unaware of all of these different populations, and your job, difficult, is going to be somehow bringing all of these ideas and these needs together so that you can somehow answer them all.
This just got so much bigger than the big pool.
But I think that's why we asked you to do this, because we need this input from the community, from everyone.
Absolutely.
To help us make a better decision than just saying, I mean, I think if we didn't do this, we'd be kinda shooting in the dark and not having a,
Absolutely.
But you did an outstanding job. I tell you, going to all the schools, and you could even tell in the comments that the different, when you went to schools that weren't in Garden City, the comments were a lot different.
Yep.
You know, you could see, "Well, I go to Dodge," or "I go, you know, I go somewhere else than Garden, because why would I go to Garden City? Because it's closer to go to Dodge City."
Yeah.
Well, that's not, what? Yeah, so you must have been in like Cimarron, or Ingles, or someplace.
Or Deerfield, or one of the other schools. So we pulled this comment out because we really liked it. It said, "Don't stop what you do, keep making things grow and expand. Once that stops, everything stops, just keep growing." And this came from a high school sophomore.
Kinda sounded like a comment we heard today, almost.
So this is some of the comments that we, we counted as not relevant to the topic because we couldn't categorize this exactly. But this was the sentiment that I got from a lot of people. I had a lot of teachers and students come and hit me on the shoulder and say, "I like what you're doing, I feel like you're gonna make a good decision, just go make it." You know, "I'm gonna trust you to make it, just go make it. I value that you asked me, thank you, but now go make the best decision." And so I leave you kind of with that, knowing that I think for the most part, the community trusts you to make this decision. I had to have some really hard conversations with people. Some that didn't even come to talk to me about the pool, they just wanted to talk about property tax. So that's another, you know, thing that, that's important to people, but we talked. Some of them, we talked for an hour about things that weren't directly related to the big pool, but factored into what the city's doing, and so.
Well, property tax will play into this project, so it is relevant.
So, April second, that's kind of what we decided would be your next meeting in regards to the big pool. And when I first started this, like I told you, my intention was to come before you today and bring specific projects that I believed matched what the community said they wanted. And I think I could do that. But as I thought about doing that, I thought maybe I was doing two things. I was maybe imposing what I heard and what I saw more than what the surveys say because I got to experience this firsthand, right? I got to see and talk to all these people. And also was maybe putting you guys in a more difficult position. And so one of the things that I have considered heavily over the last probably two weeks is that maybe April second becomes even a little more expanded than I had, had originally thought, and that maybe we open this up to some sort of one additional community engagement. And I know you say, "Okay, we've already talked to six thousand some people." But if we were on April second, if I was to design an RFP that actually had people who designed facilities like this, say, "Take a look at our survey results. Take a look at all the information we've gathered from our community. Take a look at these locations, and compete against each other to design what you think is a best fit for our community." And hopefully we would get five or six, and then we put those out to the community to vote on before you, before they come before you. A chance to vote on them, maybe we even stick them in the utility bill, so that people could just check it and mail it back to us. Just one question, very simple, here they are, we could have them online, you know, that sort of thing. And then bring those results back to you guys and say, "Here's where we're at."
The only thing about that is, I participated in some of those, and you know, it's a lot of work for them to prepare all that for nothing.
It is, yeah, absolutely.
And whether, you know, you may not get a project, you know, I mean, you almost have to give them some parameters, like five million dollars?
Oh, absolutely, so those are all the things.
Because, I mean, you know, it'll be all over the board.
So those are all the things that I would put in the memo for you guys on April second is, "Here's what we currently spend on the big pool every summer. Here's how I would foresee this cost being expanded out over a period of time. Here's how much I think you could spend if you wanted, and have you guys actually dial in those details on April second, so that then the RFP would go out after April second. And then it would come back before you with those." And I get it, Dan, I, I hear you with, with the things, "This is expensive and this is..." But if the person comes back with the right idea and really hits our community, and you guys say, "Let's do this," that group just got a project that they may not have otherwise been able to, to target if we try and design it ourselves. And I, I can tell you what I think the community wants, and you guys can probably look at all of this and say, "I think I know what they want." But until people see the actual concept, it's hard for them to say, "Yeah, that's what I want."
But it's not a binding, it's just, it's another piece of information, I think it is.
But it gives them a visual idea, or it gives them kind of, hears from all of the information that we've gotten from the community into this concept. And then it gives them a yes or no, or, "I like this," or.
And I think you would get a lot of people, because I had phone calls, I had at least three different, more than one hour phone call with consultants from all over the country, different locations, that said, "You are engaging how many people in your community? What, how is this, this is what people hire us to do, is we come in and we engage them, and then we design the concept from there." So we've already done a lot of the hard work, and we're saying, "Let us give this to you. Let us tell you the parameters for which we're willing to go down a road, and then you come to us with what you do, which is design and, you know, read our results and tell us what you think is the best fit within our parameters."
And I do think there's some opportunities for partnership also. I mean, had a discussion with Drew Tone, this idea that, you know, they've already said they would dedicate a full-time aquatics director if they did have an indoor facility. You know, so I mean, I think there's also opportunities for partnership, not just with the city alone. So I think, you know, that's some of those things, like you said, knocking it out on April second might be an opportunity to, you know, really delve into some of those things, so. It was odd, this, that was, yeah, the survey information was, I was, I'm, I'm only partway through, I just was like, wow.
It's a good job, thank you.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Good job, Jennifer.
All right. Commission report.
Commissioner says?
Again, I'd like to congratulate Ethan on his very high honor and on his award and his day in Garden City. And Ceylin, her great, she's always doing a, making us always look good. And again, a lot of good information that was provided today. I think sometimes the citizens, you know, we, we get a lot of the information, and we're a lot more educated on these types of different incentives than, than the regular community, and they get, they get the, kind of the, I don't wanna say it, Reader's Digest version of what we get. So they don't understand what, what we're looking at and what we get. I mean, it's out there, but sometimes they just don't, they just don't go and, go online and read what we have. But a lot of good discussion. I think hopefully that has cleared up a lot of information, or has helped educate our community on what we as commissioners look at and the city staff looks at to try to make our community grow and, and be a, a better place. A lot of good discussion too, and we have agreed to disagree, and, but hopefully we are all on the same page afterwards. And again, congratulations to Shannon on, on being the next commissioner and serving out Commissioner Dale's term until at least November, or if he wants to make that decision and to run. And to the other two candidates, you know, again, like I said, it's hard to put your name out there and put it up. I know I've done it, and I know Mayor Finkhauser's done it before as well, so. Again, congratulations to those three that did put their name forward. That's all I've got, thank you.
Commissioner Andrew.
Yeah, I know we've had long meetings, so I'm gonna keep this very brief. I really appreciate, congratulations, Shannon, we're excited to have you on the commission. I do wanna say thank you especially to Linda Adams and David Crace. I think they, again, I think showing up and putting your name in and doing it following a process, I was really impressed. And I didn't realize how hard a decision could, would all three have really made a big difference. And I'm excited about the difference that Shannon's gonna make, so congratulations. I do wanna say, I didn't realize we were sitting, I was sitting by next to royalty, so. Now that I have it, now I'll have this new seat butter, which I'm, buddy, I'm excited about, but I, so congratulations, Ceylin. Jennifer, I just, the, I'm, I'm extremely impressed with the process of the big pool. I mean, I waited until the end, had to be agonizing, and then making sure that you gave it the energy. So that was, you really brought back up the energy, and so I really appreciate that. It's, it's a place that's near and dear to me. I think we're taking it seriously, what that looks like as commissions in the future. And then the last thing I wanna mention is, is Hank Reif Kokel, when he came today, I really appreciate citizens who are willing to step out and say, "Hey, I wanna make sure I understand this and what this looks like. And help me if I don't understand, or help me where I am understanding." Because it isn't easy to come before the city commission, and, and so I really respect him and Mr. Lauks coming, and then the, the citizens who supported them. Excellent decision. I mean, that's it.
Commissioner Burns.
I thoroughly enjoyed today's meeting. That's all I have.
Good comments.
What can I say after that?
You are.
No, I just wanna welcome Shannon. Appreciate what you did, and you represented yourself well, and glad to have you on board. and glad to have you on board. And Jennifer, thank you for that presentation, it was very good. And I think, Ceylan, congratulations to you. And that's all I have, thank you all. Sorry it took so long, but it's 4:31.